I'm going to call this meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro.
Yeah.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertoni.
Here.
And Mayor Moy.
Here. And tonight, our invocation will be presented by Landon Pace and our Boy Scout Troop 100. And they'll be bringing the colors for it as well.
By your head and may you see fit. Our Father, make us trustworthy, for there are those who trust us. Make us loyal, for through loyalty we reach our highest ideals. Teach us to be helpful, for through helpfulness do we forget our selflessness. Trust us in courtesy, for courtesy is the carpet on life's floor. Make us kind, for kindness is the oil in the cogs of life's machinery. Insist upon our obedience, for victory comes only to him who obeys. Make us cheerful, for cheerfulness is the green grass among the rocks in the path of life. Train us in thrift, for thrifty habits brighten our future. Make us brave, brave in the dark and brave in the light, but save us from becoming fakers in bravery. Help us to be clean, clean in thoughts and speech and in deed. And may we remember that our bodies are thy holy temples, and that any abuse thereof is to tamper with thy great plans. Above all, O God, help us to be reverent towards all things which thou hast made for our enjoyment when we are in thy great outdoors among the trees, along the streams, and on the hillsides. May we know it was thee who made the waters to flow, the trees to reach heavenward, the mountains to endure all ages. And in these things we ask that thou wilt help us, and we may never forget the scout oath which we all have pledged ourselves, so that through thy help we may live these points of our scout law. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Landon. And the pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Scout Troop 482, the Color Guard.
Pull our attention, troop attention. Audience, please rise. Pull our forward march, troops salute. Audience, please take your time orders. Pull our pull. Pull our prepare for set colors. Pull our present colors. Please show me the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pull our prepare close colors. Pull our close colors. Two. Color of B, form. Pull our forward march. Pull our mission troops, audience, please sit.
Thank you, scouts. We're going to now turn to council reports. And I'm going to start with you, Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll keep it real brief. Things have been going pretty busy. I was able to attend the Farm Bureau Dinner. It was really nice. And also, I was able to go out to the Chocolate and Vine. If you haven't attended that, it was a really nice little gathering out there in Green Valley as well. Makes me look forward to the possibility of more of these type events as we grow and compete in our wine industry out there in the beautiful Susun Valley. But that's all I have for my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. This chamber always works better when we have our residents here to engage with us. So I am going to forego any other report, other than to welcome you all, and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Panduro.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to report very quickly. Last week, I think it was, I attended the Point in Time Count. The Point in Time Count is an event that happens throughout the county, where every city goes out and counts all of our houseless residents, in order to receive funding from the federal, from state funding, and probably federal funding. And I wanted to thank Sam, our homeless services director, for assisting in that cause in the city, as well as all the volunteers that came out at 5:30 in the morning, and spent the morning counting residents that live, you know, within our city, as well as the police department and our hit team. So just want to say thank you, and hopefully we get some good results from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Vicaro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to echo what the Vice Mayor said, welcome, everybody. It's always glad to see when this chamber is full, and I am looking forward to hearing from everybody. So, welcome again. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Councilman Tonison.
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. I've been really busy, too, going to events, but wanted to call out the Tri-City NAACP event over the weekend. It was an amazing event. It highlighted unsung heroes in literacy. That included Riley Joan, and who many of you may know, Michael, how do I say his name right? Threads? Threads, I think it is. Michael Threads is with the Salano Library. He's a supervisor based out of Fairfield. And he is an international sensation. He was just on Good Morning America, and his TikToks highlighting literacy, I believe it's at over a million views altogether. He has put Salano on a map in a really amazing and cool way. And so, I got to meet with him and fangirl over him and take a picture with him, and that was pretty awesome. He also announced that he is hosting Afro Day at the Library. He says it's either going to be a Friday, sorry, in Fairfield or Vallejo. And he's pinned a date, which is March 30th. Also extremely excited about that. As a natural hair girl, I'm Afro-ready whatever day he wants to do it. But I will highlight it and lift that event, just as I want to highlight him. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I am going to pass on giving a report tonight, because I could keep us here all night, but we have other business to do. And Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, just one quick thing. Unfortunately, our restrooms are out of order, so our facilities team's here working on that. If anybody needs to use facilities, if you go out the front doors, right across the walkway is the police department main lobby that we have opened that up. There's some public restrooms in there. So if anybody needs to use restroom, that's where you can go. The other item, then, is just to notify you, council. Item number four on the consent calendar. We're going to be pulling that item from the agenda tonight, and that'll come back at your next council meeting for consideration.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. And Madam Clerk.
I don't have a report this evening. Thank you.
All righty. We'll just scoot right along. Are there any changes beside number four?
Just item four.
Okay, okay, good. So, we're going to go to presentations now, Madam Clerk, if you would.
Yes. Item one, proclamation declaring scouting day, presented by Councilmember Doug Carr to Cornelius Neal.
That's awesome.
All right. This is presented to Cornelius Neal, Troop 100, Troop 482 and PAC 92. Wow, look at that.
Now we're talking.
All right. National Scouts BSA Day, February 6, 2024. Whereas in 1907, Lord Robert Baden Powell founded the Boy Scout Program in the United Kingdom with 20 boys at the Brow C Island. And whereas in 1909, Chicago publisher William D. Boyce, while on a trip to London, was so impressed by the scouting coming to his aid in the fog, that he was inspired to bring the Scouts to America and incorporated the Boy Scouts of America program on February 8, 1910. And whereas a flagship program of Boy Scouts of America, previously known as Boy Scouting, became known as Scouts BSA on February 1, 2019. When the program opened to girls and collectively referred to all members as Scouts. And whereas the Scout Program with over 200 astronauts, many presidents, and other dignitaries have been Scouts, has had a profound impact on the United States. And whereas the Scout Program has been inspired... ..................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
I'm going to call this meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro.
Yeah.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertoni.
Here.
And Mayor Moy.
Here. And tonight, our invocation will be presented by Landon Pace and our Boy Scout Troop 100. And they'll be bringing the colors for it as well.
By your head and may you see fit. Our Father, make us trustworthy, for there are those who trust us. Make us loyal, for through loyalty we reach our highest ideals. Teach us to be helpful, for through helpfulness do we forget our selflessness. Trust us in courtesy, for courtesy is the carpet on life's floor. Make us kind, for kindness is the oil in the cogs of life's machinery. Insist upon our obedience, for victory comes only to him who obeys. Make us cheerful, for cheerfulness is the green grass among the rocks in the path of life. Train us in thrift, for thrifty habits brighten our future. Make us brave, brave in the dark and brave in the light, but save us from becoming fakers in bravery. Help us to be clean, clean in thoughts and speech and in deed. And may we remember that our bodies are thy holy temples, and that any abuse thereof is to tamper with thy great plans. Above all, O God, help us to be reverent towards all things which thou hast made for our enjoyment when we are in thy great outdoors among the trees, along the streams, and on the hillsides. May we know it was thee who made the waters to flow, the trees to reach heavenward, the mountains to endure all ages. And in these things we ask that thou wilt help us, and we may never forget the scout oath which we all have pledged ourselves, so that through thy help we may live these points of our scout law. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Landon. And the pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Scout Troop 482, the Color Guard.
Pull our attention, troop attention. Audience, please rise. Pull our forward march, troops salute. Audience, please take your time orders. Pull our pull. Pull our prepare for set colors. Pull our present colors. Please show me the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pull our prepare close colors. Pull our close colors. Two. Color of B, form. Pull our mission troops, audience, please sit.
Thank you, scouts. We're going to now turn to council reports. And I'm going to start with you, Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll keep it real brief. Things have been going pretty busy. I was able to attend the Farm Bureau Dinner. It was really nice. And also, I was able to go out to the Chocolate and Vine. If you haven't attended that, it was a really nice, nice little gathering out there in Green Valley as well. Makes me look forward to the possibility of more of these type events as we grow and compete in our wine industry out there in the beautiful Susun Valley. But that's all I have for my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. This chamber always works better when we have our residents here to engage with us. So I am going to forego any other report, other than to welcome you all, and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Panduro.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to report very quickly. Last week, I think it was, I attended the Point in Time Count. The Point in Time Count is an event that happens throughout the county, where every city goes out and counts all of our houseless residents, in order to receive funding from the federal, from state funding, and probably federal funding. And I wanted to thank Sam, our homeless services director, for assisting in that cause in the city, as well as all the volunteers that came out at 5:30 in the morning, and spent the morning counting residents that live, you know, within our city, as well as the police department and our hit team. So just want to say thank you, and hopefully we get some good results from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Vicaro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to echo what the Vice Mayor said, welcome, everybody. It's always glad to see when this chamber is full, and I am looking forward to hearing from everybody. So, welcome again. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Councilman Tonison.
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. I've been really busy, too, going to events, but wanted to call out the Tri-City NAACP event over the weekend. It was an amazing event. It highlighted unsung heroes in literacy. That included Raleigh, Joan, and who many of you may know, Michael, how do I say his name right? Threads? Threads, I think it is. Michael Threads is with the Salano Library. He's a supervisor, based out of Fairfield. And he is an international sensation. He was just on Good Morning America, and his TikToks highlighting literacy, I believe it's at over a million views altogether. He has put Salano on a map in a really amazing and cool way. And so, I got to meet with him and fangirl over him and take a picture with him, and that was pretty awesome. He also announced that he is hosting Afro Day at the Library. He says it's either going to be a Friday, sorry, in Fairfield or Vallejo. And he's pinned a date, which is March 30th. Also extremely excited about that. As a natural hair girl, I'm Afro-ready whatever day he wants to do it. But I will highlight it and lift that event, just as I want to highlight him. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I am going to pass on giving a report tonight, because I could keep us here all night, but we have other business to do. And Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, just one quick thing. Unfortunately, our restrooms are out of order, so our facilities team's here working on that. If anybody needs to use facilities, if you go out the front doors, right across the walkway is the police department main lobby that we have opened that up. There's some public restrooms in there. So if anybody needs to use restroom, that's where you can go. The other item, then, is just to notify you, council. Item number four on the consent calendar, we're going to be pulling that item from the agenda tonight, and that'll come back at your next council meeting for consideration.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. And Madam Clerk.
I don't have a report this evening. Thank you.
All righty. We'll just scoot right along. Are there any changes beside number four?
Just item four.
Okay, okay, good. So, we're going to go to presentations now, Madam Clerk, if you would.
Yes. Item one, proclamation declaring scouting day, presented by Councilmember Doug Carr to Cornelius Neal.
That's awesome.
All right. This is presented to Cornelius Neal, Troop 100, Troop 482 and PAC 92. Wow, look at that.
Now we're talking.
All right. National Scouts BSA Day, February 6, 2024. Whereas in 1907, Lord Robert Baden Powell founded the Boy Scout Program in the United Kingdom with 20 boys at the Brow C Island. And whereas in 1909, Chicago publisher William D. Boyce, while on a trip to London, was so impressed by the scouting coming to his aid in the fog, that he was inspired to bring the Scouts to America and incorporated the Boy Scouts of America program on February 8, 1910. And whereas a flagship program of Boy Scouts of America, previously known as Boy Scouting, became known as Scouts BSA on February 1, 2019. When the program opened to girls and collectively referred to all members as Scouts. And whereas the Scout Program with over 200 astronauts, many presidents, and other dignitaries have been Scouts, has had a profound impact on the United States. And whereas the Scout Program has been inspired... Program has been inspired young people for over a hundred years, teaching them the importance of values such as citizenship, leadership, integrity, responsibility, service to others, and self-reliance. And whereas the Scout Program promotes healthy values and helps young people develop strong moral values and character, um, presenter Doug Carr, Councilmember to Cornelius Neal, Troop One Hundred, Troop Four Eight Two, and PAC Ninety Two. Whereas Scouts are common goal to become productive members of society with defined standards of honor, respect for their community outlined in the Scout Oath, and whereas we honor and support these Scouts striving to live by the Scout Law. A Scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courageous, kind, obedient, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. And whereas this proclamation gives recognition to all long history of commitment to the founding principles of the Boy Scouts of America, showing gratitude for the countless voluntary services ours, highlighted by Eagle Scout projects, and with the sincere appreciation for the dedicated leaders who tirelessly guide and enable the program, and encourage the community to honor and celebrate Scouts during the, um, mimonious occasion. Now therefore, I, J. Catherine Kat Moy, Mayor of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim that the City of Fairfield, California, we shall uphold February eighth, twenty twenty-four as National Scouts BSA Day.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cornelius Neal. Uh, as far as Scouts BSA goes, we have three primary components. I am one of those components. I am the scouting professional. It is my job and is my goal, it is my career, to make sure that we, uh, acquire, have all of the resources available, to make sure that our second component, these lovely Scouts, can have the best possible experience that each of them can possibly have in scouting. And our third component are their parents. All the parents, raise your hand, your scout parent. We trick the parents by saying it's only one hour a week. But they enjoy all the time, and I enjoy all the time and the effort that we all put in on a daily and on a weekly basis to make sure that these young people can continue to grow and to mature and to matriculate and to become the leaders not of tomorrow, we always say that, but to be the leaders of right now. And that's exactly what they are. And so to the City Council of Fairfield, California, we are thankful that you guys took some time out of your day and out of your evening and your meeting tonight to share a few moments with us, uh, and we look forward to seeing you all again a year from now. Now, and before we leave, uh, to our clerk and to our city manager and to our city attorney, please forgive me, I have to come back with some gifts for you all. But we do have some gifts in this box for the city council. If I could take this one moment here and ask one of our scouts here to come, yep, you, you looked at me. Can you make sure that, that's, that's their names are on the envelope? Try to make sure that each one of the city council persons gets the envelope with their name on it.
And while this future leader is passing out these envelopes, we have a gift for each one of our city council members. If you want to, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, yes, I had a bad ear day too. About this. Thank you. Oh.
Sweet.
We appreciate everything that the Scouts do and have traditionally done here in the City of Fairfield. We're proud of each of these leaders, and they are leaders now in our community, and , uh, we always like gifts too, so that's special. And you're welcome to come back anytime you have gifts. Yeah, thank you for being here and also leading us in the pledge today. Thank you very much.
Our Eagle Scouts, raise your hand.
Wow.
Eagle Scout is the top honor in Boy Scouts of America, Scouts BSA, and I have drafted me since five years ago.
Wow. That's awesome.
Those holding proclamations, please go to the front.
Maybe over here, 'cause this is always in the way. Do you wanna get in the middle?
Oh, how cute.
Sorry, this thing always gets in the way. Uh, well, I, I did get a third shot, but.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, the next presentation?
Yes, Proclamation and Poem Declaring Black History Month, presented by Councilmember Kay Patrice Williams, to Deborah Williams of the Fairfield Sassoon National Council of Negro Women, and our poet laureate Suzanne Bruce. She'll read her poem first.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Moy, uh, council members and audience. Um, the theme for this year's, um, Black History Month is African American and the Arts, and I'm sorry, I don't have any gifts. There is so much to celebrate encompassing this theme, from spirituals to blues and jazz to hip-hop, to writers like Toni Morrison and Alice Walker, Maya Angelou, to Afrofuriest films like Black Panther, Wakana Forever, so many wonderful contributions. I narrowed down my tribute to one era that I think actually is the catalyst for the amazing African American arts and creativity, the Harlem Renaissance. Awakening the Arts, a tribute to the Harlem Renaissance. Harlem Renaissance, black cultural Mecca, gained energy after the Great Migration, underlying dreams to bloom and burst. Excitement ignited a golden time. African American artists, writers, musicians, hearts filled with passions exploded. Awareness flickered a cause, then creative lives began to shine. Augustus Savage's realistic sculptures influenced views of black people, now seen with dignity. Duke Ellington's band played with vigor and vitality. Brazen brass instruments blast, if it don't mean a thing, it ain't got that swing, while Josephine Baker danced with feathery skirts. Poet County Cullen's words flew off the page, even when gayness had to remain in the closet. Zora Neale Hurston's, their eyes were watching God, a liberated voice about identity soars, and so no more were power and conflict shadows. This explosion illuminating social justice, where pride in and control over, how black experiences were heard, set the stage for civil rights. In humble remembrance, such richness revisited today. No longer a dream of what could be, it is bright reality of beloved talent, wealth of history forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was beautiful, Suzanne. Um, Black History Month, February sixth, twenty twenty-four, whereas Black History Month has been celebrated in the United States during the month of February since nineteen seventy-six. The theme of twenty twenty-four is African Americans and the Arts. Spanning the many impacts Black Americans have had on visual and performing arts, literature, music, cultural movements, this theme is infused with African Caribbean and Black American lived experiences, and whereas African American artists have used art to preserve history and community memory, as well as for empowerment. Artistic and cultural movements such as the New Negro, Black Arts, Black Renaissance, hip-hop, Afrofurtism have been led by people of African descent and set the standard for popular trends around the world, and whereas the centuries, Western intellectuals denied or minimize the contributions of people of African descent to arts as well as history, even their art, art, art history is in many ways mimicked or stolen. However, we can still use the unbroken chain of black art production from antiquity to the present, from Egypt across Africa, from Europe to new, to the New World, and whereas systematic oppression has sought to negate much of the dreams of our great poets like Langston Hughes, Zora Neale Hurston, and our freedom fighters, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, and Fannie Lou Hamer. And whereas, whether digital, literary, visual, or performing arts, black trailblazers and innovators revolutionize their fields, often transforming them by pioneering new techniques and style. Through art, important issues and figures in African American history are exalted, and underrepresented stories are preserved. Art plays a role in communicating emotions, building community, and inspiring action. Now therefore, Catherine Kat Moy, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, hereby proclaims the month of February twenty twenty-four, Black History Month, in the City of Fairfield, and asks our citizens to celebrate with the multitude of contributions that black people have made in our community, the world at large, and to appreciate the struggle they endure. Thank you. So with that, I would love to, uh, be able to present this proclamation to the National Council of Negro Women, Fairfield Sassoon Vacaville Chapter. Um, if you have never attended their annual, uh, event, um, it's something that you have to do. Uh, it was just a few weeks ago, and every time, whether it's virtual or in person, that I walk into that Hilton, um, with all these amazing women, it just lifts my heart and spirit. Um, I'm just grateful to be able to sit in your shadows, walk in your footsteps. Um, I say it all the time, I'm the second, uh, black woman to be elected on this council. I sit on this council with the first. And we're able to do that because of women like these.
Yes.
So with that, let me introduce you to them.
Hello, good evening, good evening, to the council members, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the, the Fairfield Sassoon Vacaville section of the National Council Negro Women, I am deeply honored and profoundly grateful to accept this proclamation from the Fairfield City Council. This recognition holds immense significance for our organization and affirms the importance of our mission in the Fairfield community. The National Council of Negro Women has always been dedicated to uplifting and empowering women of African descent, their families and communities through education, advocacy, and service. To be acknowledged by the Fairfield City Council underscores, underscores the impact of our efforts and invaluable contributions to our members. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to the Fairfield City Council for your support and recognition of NCNW's work. This proclamation serves as a reminder of the collaborative spirit that exists between our organizations and local government, and it motivates us to continue striving for positive change in our community. As we move forward, let us remain steadfast in our resolve to empower women, to promote social justice, to build stronger, more resilient committees and, and communities. Together, we can continue to make meaningful progress and inspire positive change for generations to come. Once again, thank you to the Fairfield City Council for this honor. We are deeply grateful and motivated to continue our important work in partnership with the city and its residents. Thank you.
Yeah, we want, we want everyone. Is that okay? We're gonna stand up here.
I guess just in front of council. Yes, yes, absolutely. One, two, three. Take a couple. Very nice, thank you. And our last proclamation is Proclamation Declaring Lunar New Year, presented by Mayor Catherine Moy to CCN of Apapa, Asian Pacific Islander, American Public Affairs, and the Chinese Association of Solano County.
Come on down, CC and friends, hi. How are you? Yes, come here. Good to see you. Hey, how are you, chief? Everybody down, here we go. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
All right. This is a real honor. This is a proclamation to celebrate the Lunar New Year, whereas February tenth, two thousand twenty-four marks the beginnings of the Lunar New Year, and joins families in California, Asia, and around the world in welcoming the Year of the Dragon. And whereas, as we look forward to a joyous new year, we proudly reflect on the contributions of the Asian and Pacific Islander community who helped build California from America's first transcontinental railroad to the farms and small businesses foundational to our state's economy. Whereas Fairfield is home to approximately eighteen percent Asian and Pacific Islander Americans, and we're proud of that. We encourage Fairfield schools to take the time to educate students about the traditions of Lunar New Year and the past and present. of Lunar New Year and the past and present contributions of the Asian and Pacific Islander community in our state and city. And whereas, on this special day, families celebrate and prepare for the arrival of a new year, good health and prosperity. And whereas, the celebration of the Lunar New Year in communities throughout Fairfield illustrates the city's rich cultural history and commitment to racial, religious, and cultural diversity. Whereas, as the door to the Year of the Dragon opens, we wish good fortune, health, and happiness to all of those who celebrate this occasion. Now therefore, I, Catherine Kat Moy, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim February 10, 2024 as Lunar New Year, the Year of the Dragon in the City of Fairfield, and encourage all residents to celebrate this joyous occasion. We've got two, one for you two, come on, there's plenty to go around. Double the love, okay, very good.
So we're going to the front?
We'd like to say a couple words, C.C. or somebody, huh?
Well, I just want to say thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, the supervisors of the council members for the recognition, and also City of Fairfield that we've been here, like, like Mayor said, as immigrant, first, second, third generations, like all you sit here, you know, disregard where you come from, Europe, Africa, everywhere else, because we believe in American dream. And we believe the same as the Lunar New Year would believe, same way, you believe, everybody be the same value, American value, that, that is family, education, peace, and prosperity. It's American dream. So thank, thank you so much. What, by the way, you can, you're welcome to McDonald's bathroom anytime. If you need it.
We love, that's, that's really American, huh? McDonald's? We're all about that. I eat too much of it, anyway.
Well, just, just, just quick, I as immigrant, was very quickly, I see, I see many people here, I see faces, I know you. Wonderful you come here, spend, take time here to be part of this community you care for, and you pay for these people, everybody too. And that's one, that's what we started Apapa 222 years ago from here, from, from Fairfield, now national, to celebrate American value and actively engage in the civic matter like what you do. And so we want to thank you all for helping me, as immigrant, come here, I had first McDonald's here, but I built three more in the last 20, 30 years.
Take a picture, and then the council stamp, please. Hi, Anna. There's one lady, I can't see her. Yeah, there we go. Baby, baby, right, right here. Okay, one. Okay, everyone, look, one, two, three. Take one more. And someone asked me to take one with their camera, sorry. It's like the paparazzi. There we go. All right, Madam Clerk, now we're going to turn to public comments, if you would, please.
Yes. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, if you're online, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone. And I'm not sure how many minutes.
It's gonna be one minute.
Okay, speakers are going to be limited to one minute per item this evening. Thank you. And our first speaker is Joseph Levi.
Levy.
Levy, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Madam Clerk, are these items for item 15 or for public comment?
Oh, sorry, I'm jumping ahead, you're right, I do have, um...
So at this time, I think we're only taking public comment on items not on the agenda. So if you're here to speak on item 15, that'll be called it item 15.
You're right, thank you, I'm sorry about that. I have two for public comment. Francisco Guzman. Yes, please come up. To be followed by Wardine Taylor. Right into the middle there, thank you.
Thank you very much. So the reason that I decided to be here tonight is because in the street essentially where I reside, we've seen a number of accidents. And a couple of situations been fairly severe where two turned over vehicles, and that's on Acacia Street between Union and Texas Street, essentially. That's a cut through a street, so it's very unfortunate that drivers at a certain times of the day, they feel free to go way past the speed limit of the, of the street. It has been a concern for a long time since I moved to the area, however, I appreciate the opportunity to voice my concern.
Thank you, Francisco. Is Paul here, or somebody from, oh, Paul? Oh, if you could go out there, Paul is the head of our Public Works and he'll talk to you a little bit about that and see what we can do, thank you.
Next is Wardine Taylor, to be followed by Rochelle Connor.
I'm speaking on behalf of a few of my neighbors, actually Francisco is one of my neighbors, and just a few more that I have here. He brought up about the speeding on Acacia Street. It's out of control, and with the new store up there that's opened, there is so much traffic, they don't slow down for anything or anybody. I was pleased to get an email from, from Ms. Panduro, our council, our District 5, about the ADA ramps, because I push my grandbabies in a stroller to go to the store, and I can't lift them up the curb, there's no ramps to go up. So I have to push them on Acacia Street while cars are going 70, 80 miles an hour.
You have 10 seconds left.
Okay. And then the creek on Acacia Street, my neighbor and I, there was homeless living there for over a month, and I reported, nothing happened, we got them out.
What time's that?
Okay.
Okay.
And the garbage, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Rochelle Connor.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I live off of Waterman, and I have emailed you and Councilmember Carr regarding the safety of the walk path, the trail, the sidewalk, that's not really there, going up Oliver Road from Woodside Creek up to Colob. Part of it was replaced by Public Works, but that whole long stretch, I think from Burbank down, that has not been repaired, and I asked about this back in March of last year, and it is still unsafe. Old people are tripping, I'm tripping, people with strollers are tripping, and I'd like to know what does the city intend to do about replacing that portion of the sidewalk.
Paul is the person who can address that with you too, in Public Works, he's in the back, we're keeping him busy tonight. But yes, thank you so much.
Okay, did anyone else want to speak on public comment? I do see three hands raised online, Valeria, or four now, are those for public comment or something later on in the evening?
We have Nurse Nuzad.
Could you speak up, please, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have Nurse Nuzad followed by Andrew Lee, you have one minute.
Okay, thank you. Could you please repeat your name? Could you please repeat your name and then speak? Thank you.
Hello, please, unmute.
Hello? Let's move on to the next speaker, please. Take the next speaker, Valeria.
Okay.
Uh, hi, Mayor Moy, council members, my name is Andrew Lee, I am a university student.
Your last two.
Hello?
Yes, could you, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I, my name is Andrew Lee, I'm a university student in the community, and I just wanted to urge you all to add a ceasefire resolution to your agenda for February 20, 24.
Okay, sir, right now, we're, yeah, right now, we're speaking on public comment only, we haven't gotten to item 15 yet. Okay, the next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Leo Calleges, followed by Omar after.
And is the next speaker going to address the ceasefire, or are they going to speak on public comment?
Public comment.
Okay, thank you, go ahead and please state your name.
My name is Leo, good evening, everyone, I'm just here to thank the Chief of Police and the Fire Department for being with us. About two weeks ago, we had an event at Holy Spirit Church where we had about 50 parents concerned about the safety in schools and around our schools, so I just want to give a shout out right to Chief of Police and Fire Department for being there with us, and I urge you, City Council members, to please contact me if you please, if you want to collaborate with us on moving forward with items to help our families to be safe in schools and around schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for public comment?
I have no speaker now.
Is there another speaker, Madam Clerk?
David went to ask Valeria, all of a sudden.
Valeria needs to speak up as well.
I have no speaker right now, thank you.
We're just waiting for the next speaker, audience.
I have no speaker right now.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, go ahead to the consent calendar, please.
Yes, and I do have one speaker for item 12. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Oh, yes, Councilwoman Panduro.
Thank you, Mayor, I would like to pull item number five.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and take that now, then.
Okay, I'll read that title. Resolution 2024-13 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, adopting city-sponsored special events for the 2024 calendar year.
Thank you. So during our council retreat that we just had, I was gonna bring this up then and identify the appropriate time to bring up, but I wanted to add two events. One would be El Dia del Niño, I wanted to add El Dia del Niño, so Day of the Child as a, as a city-sponsored event, and then also a Dia de los Muertos event as well, both of those would be TBD for the date. So I'd like to make a motion to accept that agenda item with the amendment of adding the two events.
All right.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, you need to ask for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there anybody who wants to comment on this issue?
Anyone that would like to speak on item five? No, okay.
All right. It was unanimous.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. All right, so now we'll take the rest of the consent calendar. Oh, we're gonna pull item 12 because we have a question or a speaker.
Yes, I'll read item 12. Resolution 2024-20 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Fairfield and City of Benicia for cost-sharing of the Lopes Road and Water Pipeline Reconstruction Project, authorizing the city manager to execute the MOU on behalf of the city and authorizing an update to the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget. And our speaker was Nora Dezen.
I, or our, the community appreciates what a complex and big project that this is. The only thing that I think we'd like to get some clarification on is, we expected this would be an agenda item back in December, and so now this is February, we're wondering if that then extends the completion, it was supposed to be the end of this year, does this now go into 2025? Is that a possibility, that it goes, you know?
Our Public Works Director, please, could maybe answer that question for us? Thank you, Paul.
Sure. Good evening, Paul Koschel, Public Works Director. So the timeline really is in, in sort of flux because of the coordination necessary with, primarily with FEMA and CAL OES. So in order to check all the boxes and make sure that the city receives as much federal and state reimbursement as possible, we need to kind of follow their lead on, on meeting the requirements. So one of the reasons for the delay on getting the MOU between two cities, delayed from December to now, is because those agencies were reviewing the MOU to make sure it was consistent with whatever their requirements were. So with respect to the schedule, we've been hopeful that we'd be able to get to construction this summer. At this point, that doesn't look likely that we'd be completing and reopening the road this calendar year. So we, we're gonna start design as soon as possible, we're gonna continue to work with those agencies, they do meet with our staff on a regular basis and provide input, but timeline right now, we can't commit to, to construction, you know, this year and completing this year.
Okay, so we are realistically need to expect this at 2025?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Madam Mayor, just so, for your purposes, there are two resolutions to be passed, they can be made with one motion.
They can be.
Yeah, they can be, yes.
All right. Any other public comment besides that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that was unanimous. And now... And now we'll do the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous.
And just one point of clarification for the record, item four was not included in that motion.
Yes. Right. That'll be on a future agenda. All right. So now we are going to go to new business, and that'll be item 15, please.
City Council Discussion and Direction Regarding Ceasefire Resolution. And I have City Manager David Gasway on here as presenter.
Yeah, ultimately, this item came before, did not come before the council at your last council meeting. There was public comment at the last council meeting, then the city council had some discussion amongst themselves, and ultimately, there was a motion and a second to add this item, item 15, for discussion amongst the city council on whether or not to provide direction staff to come back with a resolution calling for a ceasefire in the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Ultimately, I have no report. This is really an item now for city council discussion and public comment.
All right, so here's how we're going to do this. If you want to speak, you need to turn in a card to the city clerk. She's going to call your name, and you'll come forward. And you have one minute to speak because we have so many speakers here. I also want to say that I and the council will not tolerate any disruptions. If you do disrupt this meeting, I am going to ask you to stop what you're doing, and if you continue, you will be asked to leave the council chambers. And I also want to say that we're in Fairfield, and here we are polite to each other, and we don't want to hear any defamatory language, no name-calling, no weird noises, none of those things. It's not something, this is a very serious issue, and we cannot get anywhere if we're going to be doing those things. So I welcome all of your comments, and we're going to go ahead, and the clerk will begin by calling your names. And thank you.
Okay, the first speaker is Joseph Levy, to be followed by Karen Yuen.
Hello and good evening, Mayor Moy, council members, and citizens of Fairfield. I'm sorry, but I was not prepared for a one-minute talk. I was told I was going to have at least three minutes. But anyway, the ceasefire resolution is a complex event, perhaps most, you know, suited for at federal level rather than here at the city or county level. Just for the record, the Middle East conflict, specifically between the Hamas terrorists, we're not including all the Palestinians, but the Hamas terrorists and Israel began exactly months ago, on October 7th, four months ago, on October 7th, 2023. Because of the brevity, I also wanted to mention that it was reported by both Mayor Moy and the journalists from Fairfield. The transcripts were, a couple of the Palestinians had complained that we didn't feel safe in the city of Fairfield. The fact of the matter is that I think it was blown out of proportion. Please let us remind these same people that had made these comments.
Those are, your time is up.
Oh, wow, okay.
I know, it went fast, huh?
Yeah, just in a final note, I just asked to reconsider this meeting. Thank you.
We don't need any comments, please, from the audience. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next is Karen Yuen, to be followed by Matthew Finkelstein.
Greetings, City Council members, Mayor and Vice Mayor. I'm Karen Yuen, a 33-year Fairfield resident who raised two girls in the Fairfield-Sassoon School District. I'm also a 45-year follower of Christ who believes the massacre of God's children in a holy land needs to stop, and the first step is a permanent ceasefire. What started as Israelis' right to self-defense from the horrific killing and kidnapping of 1,400 Israelis has spiraled into the slaughter of over 25,000 Palestinians, of which over 10,000 are children. It breaks my heart that the U.S. has given about $18 billion in weaponry to Israel in 2023 and early this year. We are funding and weaponizing the mass killing of civilians, destructions of hospitals and schools and other infrastructure necessary for water and survival, while also putting our U.S. service members at risk. Please show that the City of Fairfield has humanity and integrity to call for a ceasefire resolution now. Thank you.
Speaker is Matthew.
Please, please don't clap. And the reason for that is it just takes up more time, if you don't mind. Thank you.
No, thank you. Matthew Finkelstein, to be followed by F. Meltzer.
Can I get my timer set?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to begin by asking the council a question. If you were successful beyond your wildest dreams, what names would you actually have on the ceasefire? Who would sign it? I don't have much time. So this is exactly my point. If you don't know who would sign the ceasefire that you're now being asked to debate, what place do you have in asking for one to begin with? You don't even know the personalities that are involved. And there's a reason for that. You're not getting State Department briefings, and you don't have access to state intelligence. Foreign policy is decided at the federal level, and there's a reason for that. It's because these contentious issues, in which people have been called, you know, child killers, apartheid apologists, at the last meeting in Vallejo, they accused us of killing Jesus. All of that is a result, is a consequence of choosing to talk about this item at all today. These should all be resolved at the federal level. Your expertise is not needed 7,000 miles away. It's needed here for jobs, for the homeless, for the support of your community.
Your time is up.
Not to tear it apart.
Next speaker is F. Meltzer, to be followed by Jeff Powers.
Israelis will never forget October 7th. Over 1,200 men, women, and children were savagely massacred that day in the single largest loss of Jewish life since the Holocaust. American Jews will never forget the aftermath. The last four months have left your Jewish neighbors feeling shattered, vulnerable, and unsafe. We've seen poisonous rhetoric demonizing the Jewish people and the Jewish state. We've seen rallies calling for the destruction of our indigenous homeland. We've seen homes, businesses, and synagogues vandalized. Anti-Semitic incidents have increased 400%. Please do not add to our discomfort. Fairfield voters have elected a president, two senators, and a congressional representative whom we have entrusted with foreign policy. We count on you to focus on municipal issues. We need our streets and parks safe. With the multitude of short and long-term issues facing our community, the council should not squander time and energy on an intractable conflict thousands of miles away.
Time is up. Next speaker, Jeff Powers, to be followed by Asma S.
Hi, my name is Jeff Powers. I'm a worker, a unionist, a longtime railroader, active in the unions. I'm here to speak against a ceasefire resolution. The question you have to ask yourself is who's responsible? Who's responsible for what's going on in Gaza? And the answer is Hamas, squarely on Hamas's shoulders. On October 7th, they carried out a pogrom against the Israeli people. Thousands were killed. 250 people were taken hostage. They went to a rock concert. They took young women. They raped them. They gang raped them. They took pictures of them, and they put that on the internet. They're the ones who are responsible. And they got a response. They got the Israeli army to respond. What else could they do? They're responsible for this. And why is there so much killing? It's because Hamas hides behind children, underneath mosques, underneath hospitals, underneath schools. Israeli has a right, Israel has a right to exist. It came out of the World War II, it came out of the Holocaust, it came out of the Final Solution.
Time is up. Asma, and to be followed by Rachel Lessin.
Hi, good evening. I'm a healthcare worker, a pharmacist of over 10 years, who has served Fairfield and the Solano County area. I'm also a mother of two young daughters, ages 6 and 11. I'm here to urge you to add a ceasefire resolution to your next agenda. You know, I had planned a big talk, but I have to respond to the speakers before me. This is not, this did not start on October 7th. We are talking about 75 years plus 120-plus days of genocide against the Palestinian There are thousands upon thousands of children who have been killed. These are not Hamas. These are two girls that look just like my girls, that have been slaughtered and martyred. And we feel unsafe because we are dehumanized and called animals by the New York Times and the Wall Street Journal. And you might be asking, what's your place? Your place is to represent all voices, not a few voices, all voices. Your place is to make sure that our tax dollars are not spent on genocide and on killing people. And I ask you to look at your moral compass and ask yourself what MLK would do today. Thank you.
Next is Rachel, to be followed by Andron. Andrew?
Good evening. This is an interesting concept, but the ceasefire that people are asking for in Gaza may seem like a harmless humanitarian gesture. But any solution that keeps Hamas in power guarantees that the murders of Israeli civilians, et cetera, even Palestinian children, that's what they are dedicated to do, to killing not only Israelis but all Jews. So instead of doing that, why don't we work to release the hostages, demand that Hamas no longer steal aid that is meant for civilians, and let the U.N. International Council intervene? We urge the U.S. to work on this, not our local government. Hamas must be removed, as their ultimate goal is the destruction of the state of Israel and the Jewish people.
Thank you. Next is Andrew Morell, to be followed by Tamar Davis.
I think Andrew Morell must be me. Thank you, Andrea Morell. Thank you very much. And I thank the council for having a, insisting on a civil discussion and having a discussion of a question that's important to everyone, every, everyone in the world and everyone in the country. I'm speaking in opposition to the call for a ceasefire because I believe, as others have said, Hamas needs to be decisively defeated. That is an urgent necessity. They and their backers in Tehran have one aim, the destruction of Israel and the killing of as many Jews as they deem necessary in pursuit of that, of that aim. They have said, their leaders have said, they will do this again. Israel was born out of necessity. After the Holocaust, Washington refused to let Jewish refugees into this country, although my party, the Socialist Workers Party, advocated, open the, open the doors to the Jews. Thank you.
Next is Tamar Davis, to be followed by Shulamit Linda Rosnick.
I work in Fairfield. I work in Solano County for Solano County. And I'm here tonight to speak against bringing a resolution. Hamas is a terrorist organization. This is not a secret. It's also not a secret what they did, or that they would do it again tonight if they had the opportunity. It's not my purpose to really point out all the horrible things that have happened there. My point more to say that we're here in Solano County and Fairfield, working to make Fairfield a better place, in order to make Solano County a better place, to make the state a better place, and our country a better place. And I don't think it's our place to make recommendations to foreign governments. So we're here to focus on making life better.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Shulamit, to be followed by Jack Flynn.
Good evening, Madam Moy and the esteemed council. My name is Shulamit Linda Fuentes Rosner. I am a dual citizen of the United States of America and of Israel, and I also urge you not to make a resolution for a ceasefire. And the most important reason is because they don't work. There have been 16 ceasefires between Israel and Hamas, and Hamas has broken every single one of them. As a matter of fact, October 7th, we had been in a ceasefire, and they not only broke it, but they broke it in the most savage, barbaric way. It's not our job. You have so much to do. Look at the agenda. You're very busy people. This is something that's wasting your time, that is not utilizing the taxes that your citizens pay, and it's something to leave to the federal government. They have access to all sorts of secret information we can never touch.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jack Flynn, to be followed by Sabine.
I want to just start by saying that these views I'm sharing are my personal views. I'm not speaking on behalf of the FSUSD, governing board, or any other member of the board. Coming from a place of someone who was born and raised in the Fairfield-Sassoon community, I oppose a ceasefire resolution, as I do not want to see Fairfield become a place of division, turning neighbor against neighbor. The fact of the matter is serious as this issue is, it does not fall under the purview of local city councils. Wherever these resolutions have been taken up, they have repeatedly caused harassment of elected officials and residents, hate speech, and made many people feel unsafe. This has taken place in Vallejo, Oakland, San Francisco, Palo Alto, and many other venues. I urge the Fairfield State Council, as outlined in its own conduct, to hold its foremost obligations to safeguard its role as stewards of the public good in an atmosphere of respect and civility, and members should support the maintenance of a positive constructive workplace environment for all dealings with the city. I respectfully ask the council to support the mayor's option for a resolution limiting Fairfield from taking positions on areas outside of Fairfield jurisdiction such as federal foreign policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Sabine, to be followed by John Takuiuchi.
Ma'am, you need to pull the mic back down, yeah.
Thank you. Good evening. The U.S. Department of State recognized Hamas as a terror organization in 1997. That has never been revoked. As an elected official, do you feel comfortable in supporting directly or indirectly a terrorist organization through a proposed resolution? Since October 7th, over 100 municipalities in California have been forced to deliberate on requests for ceasefires, fires, over 100. The impact on staff time runs into the tens of thousands of hours and taxpayer money, even though not a single city, including Fairfield, has a discussion of foreign policy or international matters listed in their charter. You are, this is not your purview. You are here, you are elected to serve us, the citizens, and keep us safe, and keep the city safe, not deliberate on international policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Takuiuchi, to be followed by Hector Alfaro.
Thanks. You wanted a full council chamber, you got it. Agenda is these things again, and you'll, you'll do it again. You have nothing to do, you know, resolving this particular issue. It should not even have come up. And I'm just echoing two of the previous speakers. I'm a military guy. I got, I served as a grunt and an Air Force pilot. War is hell. A ceasefire doesn't do anybody any good unless it's leading up to an armistice. Okay? This is not. I would say butt out. I like the mayor's, you know, resolution that you do so in the future.
Next is Hector Alfaro, to be followed by Susan George.
Good evening. My name is Hector Alfaro, citizen here of Fairfield. I'd like to thank for your time. I am in favor of a ceasefire agreement, more so because if I, I'd be remiss if I didn't stand for something. I work within the school district, and so it's my job, my duty to give them an example, to stand up for your convictions. What a blessed country we have that we're able to all talk about this. And I think this is the place, because there are no small people, where all can make a difference. And as a local community, we can stand up to make that to a bigger organization, such as the federal government, and for our community members who feel threatened, feel unsafe. That's why it's an issue that, it is affecting all of us all. If I feel unsafe to go to the store, if they feel unsafe to be to the store, we're supposed to about unity and not to separation and division. I think Martin Luther King said that, says that, Chauvin said that, a lot of our political activists said that, and that's what we should stand for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Susan George, to be followed by Seth.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm an officer, my name is Susan George. I'm an officer with the Jewish Democratic Club of Solano County, but this is a nonpartisan matter, and so I'm here in a nonpartisan way. matter, and so I'm here in a nonpartisan way. Tonight, I urge the council to support Mayor Moy's option for a resolution limiting Fairfield from taking positions on matters outside of Fairfield's jurisdiction, such as federal foreign policy. Behind the voices that you're going to be hearing tonight, there's a trauma. There's a trauma in the Jewish community from what happened on October 7th and its aftermath. Every day, we hear about hostages that have been murdered, that are, that are still alive. When will they find a deal to release the hostages? We don't know. There's trauma in the Palestinian community. This, bringing this matter forward only increases our trauma. It is a disservice to your community. These matters, we have organizations and other places to address them. Thank you all.
Next is Seth, to be followed by Shanti.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Seth Sanders. I'm a Jewish studies professor, and I wanted to really just make two points. One is that it is, it is important to consider the scope of what a city would talk about, but many people, especially progressives, younger Jews, feel that this is urgent enough. And there are, for example, cities that made resolutions to take another international matter against apartheid. A number of cities in California did pass such resolutions, and that, that perhaps added to a larger pattern. The other thing I wanted to talk about is that people will, sometimes say they speak for all Jews, but there's a saying, there's a Jewish saying, two Jews, three opinions. And I'll just give you one example of this when it comes to the state of Israel. Many Jews feel very strongly about it. In fact, we pray for the rest, the messianic restoration of Israel, but the largest Hasidic court in the world, the Sotmar, believe that it is a viol, the state of Israel is actually a violation of God's commandments. So there is a real diversity.
Next is Shanti, to be followed by Alex Lenine.
Hi, my name is Shanti. I'm a longtime Fairfield resident, and I work in the district. I'm here to request that the city council create a ceasefire resolution in line with those enacted by the cities of Richmond and Oakland. Our shared humanity should demand that we take whatever actions we can to stop this genocide in Gaza, especially as our taxes, approximately $1,360,000 for Fairfield residents alone, are being used to fund Israel's military instead of going towards the needs of Fairfield residents. We have a shortage of teachers and other staff in schools, a shortage of public housing, and a shortage of healthcare for those in need. I want my city to invest in those resources that actually directly improve the lives of my community, not in the killing of innocent civilians. Creating and voting for a ceasefire resolution would be a meaningful step towards showing that the city council is dedicated to caring for the diverse needs of Fairfield residents, and that they will stand up for what is right. We, as a city and as individuals, need to end our complicity in the genocide of the Palestinian people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Alex Lenine, to be followed by Kayla.
Tonight, I'm speaking for myself as a Jewish resident of Fairfield in favor of the ceasefire resolution, predominantly because we have, we are morally compelled to stand against and denounced acts of genocide which have been committed by the state of Israel against the Palestinian people. This did not start October 7th. This is a 75-year-old act of ethnic cleansing that the state of Israel has tried to enact against the Palestinian people. Although October 7th most certainly acts as one of the most deadly instances within recent Palestinian history, over 11,500 children have been slaughtered by the IDF. That's more than half the current student body of the entirety of the Fairfield Sassoon School District. Again, we are morally compelled to stand with the Palestinian people as they are in the midst of this ethnic cleansing conducted by the state of Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kayla, to be followed by Cheryl Gerving Galving.
Members of City Council, Gaza is 141 square miles. Solano County is 907. The population of Gaza is 2.2 million. The population of Solano County is 451,000. The number of children who have been killed in Gaza is 11,300. Like he said, that is more than half of our student population, 20,600 students here. That is equal to every student from Rodriguez, Fairfield, PSA, Green Valley, Grange, David Weir, Laurel Creek, Rolling Hills, Sassoon Elementary, Oak Brook Elementary, Nalda Mundy, Cordelia Hills, and Anna Kyle, if all of them were wiped off the map. You might think it's not your responsibility. You might think that it is not your fault, but the death of children across the world, if you can do something about it, it is our responsibility to speak for them. There are 17,000 children now who are unaccompanied, have no family. Please, I beg of you to please be their family.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cheryl, to be followed by Anjam, Anjam Khan.
Thank you. My name is Cheryl Gaywing. I'm the president of Congregation Benet Israel Synagogue in Vallejo. We have several members here who live in Fairfield. A ceasefire resolution will not help anyone feel safer in their community. Maybe community discussions with these people that have different views might help. This is part of a national movement to gain more support for Palestinian, for the Palestinian movement and draw away support for Israel and the Jewish people. I think it's anti-Semitic. The phrase "river to the sea," which was heard from the group who attended the Vallejo Council meeting, means kill the Jews and take over Israel, from the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea, although a lot of people who say that don't know what river and what sea. Yes, I feel it brings the Israel-Gaza war into our community, pitting two factions of the city against each other, using intimidation, hate speech, and fear.
Thank you. Next is Anjam, to be followed by Shaheen.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Anjam Khan. I'm a resident of Fairfield. This is not a complicated matter. This comes down to humanitarian efforts. This comes down to life. If we do not speak up, it means that we do not value that. And we are not the leaders who fight and speak for what is right. We have gone to Congress. We have gone to senators. We have gone to everyone. Gerramendi, you have not answered any of my voicemails or phone calls. What are we to do? We are to talk to our leaders that are in front of us at the city council level. We have seen this narrative before, and unless we speak out as cities, we have and will continue to set a precedent that we are okay with what DC does, no matter the cost. Let's stand together and be united as a collective voice for peace. Let's give a voice to all those that are dying and all those that are suffering right now. There are over 625,000 kids that are in tents. Ceasefire now.
Next is Shaheen, to be followed by Erica Ballinger.
My name is Shaheen. I'm a healthcare worker, a parent, and a Muslim American, a resident of Fairfield, an actual resident of Fairfield. And I'm here today to urge the council to hear our voices with an open heart and vote yes to agendize a ceasefire resolution that is the only way towards a sustained and lasting peace. Please look out into this room and take in all those that have shown up for support for a ceasefire. They may not all feel safe to speak, but they're here. Feel the pain and passion in our voices and recognize that these diverse voices are simply advocating for a path towards lasting peace for Israelis and Palestinians. We want the killing of innocent men and women, children to stop. How is that complicated? And why can't you think about it? Why don't you have the right to stand up for that? After 122 days, it's time to say we are more than bombs. We have the intellectual capability of demanding accountability and brokering a political solution after recognizing the root cause. And this is a local issue because my tax dollars are going to fund it. Local issue because bombs are being sent from my city.
Your time is up.
Ceasefire now.
Next is Erica Ballinger, to be followed by Alex Burke.
Good evening, council. I'm here representing Jewish Voice for Peace, a national organization working toward freedom, justice, and equality for all, from the US to Palestine. We are here tonight urging the council to adopt a ceasefire resolution. We are compelled to speak with moral clarity about what is happening to Palestinians. We do so in spite, not in spite of our own histories as Jews, but because of them. We know in our bones what it means to hear Israeli officials dehumanize an entire people, to witness the Israeli mass murder, military mass murder, tens of thousands of Palestinians, to watch Israel systematically destroy civilian infrastructure, schools, churches, hospitals, to see Israel purposely deny food, water, medicine, and shelter to refugees, literally starving families to death. The international outcry about war crimes, including genocide, is real. The International Court of Justice ruled last month that genocide claims against Israel are actionable and may proceed before the court. But the Israeli government is only able to carry out these crimes with American financial, diplomatic, and military backing, including billions of our tax dollars. We urge you to adopt a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Next is Alex Burke, to be followed by Saad.
Hi, I'm Alex Burke. I'm a Jewish student in environmental policy. So while I don't know much about war, I know a lot about issues that expand, expand beyond local borders. I echo the demand for a permanent and lasting ceasefire. I want to address a couple of things in the realm of my knowledge. One of the, one of the resistances to adopting a ceasefire is fear of being anti-Semitic. As a Jew, I know this fear is unfounded. Jews have occupied government buildings and blocked bridges all over the country. The second that is that this is not a local issue. It is a local issue. I have worked in government before. I know that a lot of funding goes into public or comes from federal funding. And a lot of local projects are federally funded. So how many tax dollars are not being sent here and instead being sent to wars overseas? Thank you. Ceasefire now.
Thank you. Next is Saad, to be followed by Richard Diamond.
Good evening, Mayor Moy and council members. I am Saad, and I'm joined here today by our local Fairfield residents as we urge you to introduce a permanent ceasefire resolution at the next council meeting. In February 2023, I visited Jerusalem, where I was subjected to discrimination. As a US citizen, I endured hostility due to my appearance, highlighting the ongoing crisis Palestinians have endured for 75 years. This incident isn't isolated. It affects many US citizens. As an example, a Palestinian-American teen was recently killed in the West Bank. Hate crimes against Muslims surged by 200% since October 7th, highlighting this did not start on October 7th. We can't fund genocide and ethnic cleansing. Our priorities should be better education, fair wages, and housing before supporting Israel's regime. Forty-eight other US cities have already acted, and we should too. As a member of this community, I urge you all to call for a ceasefire and unite our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Richard Diamond, to be followed by Dr. Ruby Ali.
Hi, I'm Richard Diamond. I signed up to speak in favor of a ceasefire conditioned on the release of the Israeli hostages being held by Palestinian government for over three months. And I realize, I feel terrible about the carnage that's going on in Gaza, and this could all end tomorrow if Hamas released the hostages and agreed to a ceasefire. But we can do anything we want to talk about here, but it isn't going to change anything. I later decided that I, I, it occurred to me that this whole resolution being considered by the Fairfield City Council is misguided. We are getting up and giving you one minute pieces of information. You are not elected for your foreign and international acumen, and the fact is, it's the wrong place to deal with a very real problem. All it's going to result in is divisiveness in our community. If you pick one way, you'll alienate one group.
Your time is up.
The other way, it's, it's just, okay.
Thank you. Dr. Ruby Ali, to be followed by Ahmad Basir.
Hi, my name is Dr. Ruby Ali. I'm a neurologist. I work here at North Bay. I take care of all of you, all of you here. When you guys have a neurological problem, guess who you come, you come to me and my other three neurological colleagues. And we all need to stand up for a ceasefire now. Imagine me being bombed, imagine North Bay being bombed, imagine all the 11,000 children being, all of these schools, you see, all of the kids being bombed. And we cannot speak up for the oppressed? Of course, we have to speak up for the oppressed. You have a moral duty to God, or whoever you believe in, to do the right thing. This, you have to be on the right side of history, because one day, you all will be accountable. Imagine all the hospitals gone, 36 hospitals in Gaza all bombed, all the doctors are killed, and what? All the children are killed? What more do you need to destroy?
Your time is up.
Not a genocide.
Next is Ahmad Basir, to be followed by Bridget Huntley.
Please don't respond to the speakers. Thank you.
Imagine you had 10 acres of land, and your family and your children and your grandchildren were living there peacefully and happily. And people came to your land, drove you off your land to one acre of land, and you were, and they took the nine-acre land. And then someday, you somehow fought back, and you were called terrorists. I do not condone Hamas's actions on October 7th, but we have to understand, this thing did not start on October 7th. It has been 75 years of slavery, of occupation, of genocide, of oppression, and now they are blocking aid trucks from entering and bringing food, bringing food. They're blocking aid trucks. The people that are standing for Israel's rights are blocking aid trucks that are bringing food to innocent children and women.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Next is Bridget, to be followed by Fatima A.
This is my first public outing in the over two months since my daughter was seriously injured while trying to avoid protesters on campus so she could go to class. I'm speaking as a Fairfield resident and not on behalf of any individual or organization. I believe that local government is not the place for hateful, divisive, and potentially inciting rhetoric on foreign policy. I ask today that you proceed with an abundance of caution, as the examples set today will be reviewed by the long lens of history. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Fatima, to be followed by Jeff Patterson.
My name is Fatma Aboghannam. Thank you, God, council members and everyone that helped get this on the agenda. Summer of 2023, I decided to take my son to meet my mother for the first time. He is nine years old in Jerusalem. My mother is a Palestinian-American. June 2023, the city of Jenin was bombed. Multiple homes were destroyed. Palestinian men and teens were detained. This is a city that's slowly been occupied by Israeli settlers. June 27, 2023, I had a guilty feeling to cut my trip short. October 7th, everyone did not know about the attacks that Israel previously made on the Palestinian people for 75 years. Ju, January 5th, as I was loading my car, someone called me a terrorist by the Solano Mall in front of my son. January 15, 2024, on few occasions, my son was called a bomber, a terrorist at school. He notified his teacher. My son did not feel safe at school. It still has not been brought to my attention. As a Palestinian-American, I do not feel safe in our community. It has not been safe. Ceasefire now, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff, to be followed by Yara Ibrahim.
What you see here on all of these placards are one, sometimes four, sometimes many faces. Every single one is different. This is the real cost of the war in Gaza currently. We have numerous children, some of which you have heard about here, who do not feel safe currently in our own schools. I'm here to urge you towards a ceasefire in Gaza. The truth is that we have used every method of war possible to try to bring these hostages home. What that has resulted in, one hostage has been brought home by military involvement. Three have died. What has brought more hostages home has been ceasefire and negotiations. I urge you all to please look at that as the option that is most effective at bringing home people that are American citizens, some people who are Israeli citizens. I urge you all to view the cost of what this is doing, as divisive as it is currently with our students here in our school systems, many of whom are not feeling safe to be themselves, whether they are Jewish or Palestinian. Ceasefire now.
Next is Yara Ibrahim, to be followed by Jerry Khan.
Hi, um, who's working? Okay. Hi, I'm here to speak about the Palestinian ceasefire for Gaza. Some of you might be mothers and fathers, and imagine your child being in a home, being bombed. It's around, as some people have said, around 11,050 children have been bombed so far. And I would, I wouldn't be able to imagine my child being bombed and killed and hospitals being bombed and. bombed, and schools being bombed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Jerry, to be followed by Janet Leventhal.
We all want peace, but does this city council wish to take on all the problems of the world? If so, I could suggest many others. How about Honduras? Honduras ranks among the top four countries in Latin America and the Caribbean, surpassing countries such as South Sudan and the number of new displacements due to disasters and conflicts. Or what about Kazakhstan, where domestic violence is not considered to be a criminal offense? More than 400 women die annually from spousal abuse. Yes, there are many problems in the world to be concerned about, but this is not the purview of this council. According to the Fairfield City website, your mission is to foster a sense of pride in the community, improve the lives of residents, and deliver dependable essential services. Consideration of this resolution fosters division, hate, and scapegoating, not pride. This is not the forum in which we can have safe discussions, get to know our neighbors, and share our different perspectives. If you wish to create community pride, you need to sponsor activities to bring people together.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Janet Leventhal, to be followed by Jacob Merkin.
My name is Dr. Janet Leventhal. I spent 30 years of my career at Kaiser Valeo Fairfield and Vacaville as an anesthesiologist, also a past president of the Valeo synagogue, which serves Jewish community of Fairfield. In Solano County, we take pride in being diverse and all getting along. We all learn from each other. One day, I was called to the Valeo emergency room to do a brief anesthetic for a man who needed a heart rhythm shock so he could have his rhythm back. He noticed that I was, I had a Jewish name, and he told me that he was a Palestinian. I mentioned how difficult the situation was over there, and he said, here we get along, there you have to take sides. And then he trusted me to get him to sleep and to wake him up. The mandate of the city council is to take care of the business of the city of Fairfield. Calling for a ceasefire for this horrendous conflict seems an obvious thing to do, but it ignores the details. The Hamas-Israel war has already increased antisemitism and Islamophobia in our country. Take a position, taking a position in the conflict would validate and increase hateful rhetoric in our community. Fairfield does not need to be divided by bringing this resolution forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jacob Merkin, to be followed by Mari Bowie.
First, I'd like to bear witness to the victims of war. There are community members in the room here who have lost family members in the last four months. Second, I'd like to testify to my Jewish values. I'm representing if not now. I was raised with the Israeli national anthem as my lullaby, and I was 25 years old when I saw the map and learned the history. Third, that is to say, my parents came from legal, administrative, and medical backgrounds, going back in the East Bay several generations. Public health, emergency relief, oncology, none of, I'm a caregiver in the community. None of this is possible when the health system has collapsed, when the society has collapsed, all of its institutions have been turned to rubble. 80% of the buildings in Gaza have been reduced to rubble.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next is Mari Bowie, to be followed by Elise.
Hi, last time I was here, I was arrested, and so I just want to express my discomfort by the increased police presence here. Additionally, I know public comment is typically three to four minutes. I do feel like this is a chilling effect, especially considering Catherine's Moy support online for Israel. Happy Black History Month, by the way. I do want to state that the struggle between Palestinian liberation and the black struggle are intrinsically linked, and I want to express my support for a ceasefire. Additionally, this is within your purview. The city council constantly invokes proclamations and other symbolic actions. You do have Palestinian constituents who are affected by this conflict. They are not just abroad. They have family members who are stuck under the rubble, missing, murdered, all within your purview to show that you care. And I think that one minute does not sufficiently enable people to adamantly state why they support a ceasefire and allow you guys to make a decision. And I support a ceasefire, and from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free. That is not hate speech. That's a fact.
Stop, please.
Next is Elise, to be followed by Omar Al-Mamood.
My name's Elise, and I'm here today to urge the city council to adopt a ceasefire resolution. It's been a little bit over a week since the ICJ ruling, asking Israel to refrain, ordering Israel to refrain from acts under the Genocide Convention. Since then, the bombing has intensified, and so-called safe zones, including Rafa, funding to the UNRWA has been severely cut, and death toll has continued to rise to over 27,000 killed in Gaza. You may ask what impact a war on occupied people across the world has on the city. However, our actions abroad reflect very much on our lives here. If America is a beacon, so-called beacon upon a hill, how can we agree to carry out continued ethnic cleansing, perpetrating of suffering of any people? Palestinians have been living through 75 years of apartheid. I have seen it, my parents have lived it, and my family continues to live through it, some of them have not. We are all Palestinians, we are all human. If the U.S. supports equality and justice, then we urge you to stop seeing Palestinians as another. We are real people with real lives. I am one of them. Under the clouds of war, it is humanity hanging on a cross of iron. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Omar, to be followed by Shaheed Raymon.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Omar Al-Mamood. I just want to start by saying, this is not a war of Islam versus Judaism. This is a matter of people having their land stolen and being punished for standing up and defending themselves. I'm here in support of a ceasefire. I've grown up watching the slaughtering of Palestinian children by the state of Israel for the past 22 years of my life. I find it shameful and sad that those who oppose the ceasefire ask you, the council, to turn a blind eye to the ongoing genocide of the Palestinian people. Making a statement and making a citywide statement to support the ceasefire will demonstrate the humanity I hope you all have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Shaheed Raymon, to be followed by Musa Tariq.
Thank you so much for your time this evening, respected mayor and the council member. My name is Shaheed Raymon. I'm a physician over here in Solano County for the past 13 years, and I take pride in serving all of the community. I'm asking a lot of residents to join Doctors Without Borders, World Health Organization, Jews Voice for Peace, the Pope, and many world leaders and human rights and faith-based organizations around the world in calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. You, we have seen, I'm especially concerned about the attacks on the hospital and the healthcare workers. The most conservative estimate, of course, of the death toll, roughly 27,000 innocent civilians, children, even newborn babies, over 66,000 injured. And now imagine hospitals are under attack. At least 339 health workers have been killed in this, in this war.
Your time is up.
For the first time in the human history, we have an acronym for injured children in Gaza, wounded children.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Musa Tariq, to be followed by Navid Desai.
Hi, I'm Musa with CARE, the Council on American Islamic Relations, and we're here to echo our friends in the Fairfield community for a ceasefire now. 13-year-old Ibrahim and his family were in a designated safe zone when everything collapsed around them. Ibrahim's hand was badly damaged and quickly became infected. Without medicine, gangrene took hold, and he ultimately lost his arm during an amputation without anesthesia. This is one of many stories UNICEF has reported from Gaza. My little brother's name is also Ibrahim. Stories like this are rooted in reality with children who share our names, who share our hopes and dreams, and who share our desire to live. The U.N. has called Gaza a children's graveyard. Over 12,000 children have been killed by Israeli bombardments. 70% of the casualties in Gaza are women and children. Miscarries in Gaza have increased 300% under Israeli bombing. 50,000 pregnant women in Gaza have no access to prenatal care. Pregnant women are having C-sections without anesthesia. Mothers can't keep their children safe. What do you call it when you make it impossible for a people to safely live, safely reproduce, and safely raise their children? You know. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Navid, to be followed by Larry W.
Dear mayor and council members, my name is Navid. I have immediate family members, coworkers, friends that call Fairfield their home. I'm calling on you to agendize and support this peaceful resolution for a ceasefire. The impact of your action will help your constituents feel safe. There are people today that will say that this issue does not fall into the purview of your city council. But since when does the safety and sense of belonging of the people of Fairfield not matter? My niece and nephew were verbally abused, called Islamophobic names, rhetoric that is currently used by the politicians and soldiers of Israel, all on American soil. The safety of these children and all of your residents matter. Improve the lives of your residents. That is the purview. The residents of Fairfield are human and are deeply affected by this humanitarian issue in Palestine. And it is deeply important that you, that even a symbolic gesture is made to show that peace can prevail over any type of Islamophobic rhetoric, and peace cannot start without a ceasefire. Our children in Fairfield are not terrorists.
Your time is up.
Neither are the civilian Palestinian children. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Larry W., to be followed by Rabbi Zachlos.
My name is Dr. Larry Wanitick, and I was privileged to serve as president of Fairfield's North Bay Medical Staff, also of the Solano County Medical Society. I'm here as a Jew, feeling rabid antisemitism following the October 7th attack on Israel. Others have spoken about the horrors of that day, and I'll forego that now. Hamas's purpose and charter, if you read their charter, is to eliminate Israel entirely. Their slogan, "From the River to the Sea," means "No Israel." Since 2005, Israel gave up Gaza, the land to the Palestinians, and they forced all the Jews who were living in Gaza, they forced the Jews out, and we were giving them carte blanche. No fee, nothing was changed in exchange for the land. This land is a beautiful seaside land and could be an ideal home.
Your time is up, sir.
Parp.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you, doctor.
Next is Rabbi Zachlos, to be followed by Manadel Hrazallah.
As I stand here, I am joined by 3,800 years of Jewish people. The fact that the Jewish people, over all of our generations, have had antisemitism against us, this that is going on today is nothing short of a modern-day blood libel. The Jewish people have a mandate of being a light unto the nations, and in a dark world, to be a beacon of light of what is right. Stand on the side of history, as the Jewish people have always been put aside, and yet louder and larger numbers never made us feel less of who we are and what we do. Today, I ask you to stand against a ceasefire, understanding that you will be standing on the right side of history for generations to come. Thank you.
Next is Manadel.
Thank you.
To be followed by Stephen Pierce.
Good evening. Maybe it's appropriate for Black History Month to start by quoting Martin Luther King, "Injustice anywhere hurts justice everywhere." My name is Manadel Hrazallah. I worked in Fairfield. I've been living in Fairfield since 2008. My family are in Gaza. My grandparents were forced out of Palestine, not in October 7th, not in 2005, but in 1948. Palestinian people have been struggling against settler colonialism, against the British colonialism, since the 30s, before even the state of Israel started to exist. Now, I wanted to share with you, because one minute is not enough. I want to share with you my feeling with my family. I have lost, in the last few months, eight members of my family, last of whom is last Sunday, the 1st of February.
Your time is up, sir.
So that's not fair. So I wanted to sit by saying, yeah, it will be shameful not to start this.
Your time is up.
Okay? You will be asked by your grandchildren, your nephews, your nieces, what did you do about this current genocide?
Thank you, sir.
Next is Stephen Pierce, to be followed by Rochelle Conner.
Honorable members of the city council, I thank you for the opportunity to address you today. As you deliberate on the complex issue of the Israel-Palestine conflict, it is vital to consider a comprehensive perspective that goes beyond a one-sided resolution. Israel, a nation born out of historical necessity and resilience, has played a pivotal role in the region. Its commitment to democracy, technological innovation, and cultural richness has made it a beacon of progress in the Middle East. While we acknowledge the challenges and complexities of the conflict, it is essential to remember that Israel, like any sovereign nation, has the right and obligation to defend its citizens. The desire for peaceful coexistence with its neighbors has been a consistent theme in Israel's diplomatic efforts in Israeli society for over 75 years. By promoting an open dialogue that recognizes both Israeli and Palestinian narratives, we can work towards a more equitable and lasting solution. Demonizing one side through resolutions may hinder the chances of fostering understanding and cooperation. Let us advocate for a measured approach that encourages dialogue, diplomacy, and mutual respect. By doing so, we contribute to the prospect of a peaceful future for both Israelis and Palestinians.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you for your consideration.
Next is Rochelle Conner, to be followed by Samad Patel.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I feel unsafe just here. There's a lot of anger and hostility, so I think this is a very divisive issue, and I don't think it's within the purview of this council. It is a national issue, and I don't think bringing this forward and voting on it is going to help our community. As many others have already testified, we need to work together instead of being divisive. All people deserve to be safe, and there are many unanswered questions. There are no clean hands in this issue. It is beyond our purview as a city, and I think that this council should focus on local issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Samad Patel, to be followed by Mercedes.
Hi, council members. My name is Samad Patel. I'm a local resident here in Fairfield, California, father of two. So hearing about all these deaths and someone within our community who's lost eight family members is very hard to hear. One thing I did want to address is a lot of the things that have been coming up is that it's not a local issue. It is a local issue. Obviously, it's affecting everyone here. That's issue number one. Issue number two is our tax dollars. Our tax dollars are affected by this. Issue number three, we have Travis Air Force Base right here in our backyard. How does this not affect us here locally? And last point, Muslim, Jewish, Christian, they all exist in Gaza. It's not a Muslim issue, it's not a Jewish issue, it's not a religious issue. It's a humanitarian issue, which is going to continue until a ceasefire. Ceasefire now.
Next is Mercedes, to be followed by Noah R. Is Mercedes here? Okay, she may have left. Next is Noah R., to be followed by Shaheed.
Good evening, council members. I'm sure you've wondered, why should we even bother with passing a ceasefire resolution for a conflict that's not under your jurisdiction? But imagine if the city of Fairfield, and the city of Richmond, and the city of Oakland, and the city of San Francisco, and Akron, and Providence, and Albany, and Atlanta, and the city of Chicago all passed ceasefire resolutions. What message does that send to our electives up in Washington, D.C., who can actually do something about it? Over 27,000 people have died, 500,000 are starving, almost 2 million people have been displaced, with over a million crowned at the border with Egypt and Rafa. We may not be able to do something, maybe at the local level, but we, as a community, have a voice. And as our council, you have a voice, and you can amplify our voice. To other people who are in power to do something, please call for peace. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Shaheed, to be followed by Deborah Gilliam. Oh, no? Are you Deborah? Okay, we'll go on to Deborah Gilliam.
Hi, I am against the ceasefire and support Mayor Moy's resolution to not, and if anything Hamas wants, it's all Jews dead. Yes, Hamas wants us dead as well, and it's in their charter. Supporting the ceasefire is annihilation as well for the Jews and for us. Again, it is in their charter. Taking a stand for the ceasefire shouts you, as a city council, that we stand for the Palestinians to kill all the Jews, and is bringing condemnation to our county as well. This was a common This was a conversation between Israel and Hamas leaders. Israel, can you recognize Israel's right to exist and make peaceful treaty? Hamas, no. Israel, can you stop the rockets? Hamas, no. Israel, can you prevent terror attacks? Hamas, no. Israel, can you release Israel's hostages? Hamas, no. Israel, okay, we'll protect our citizens. Hamas, genocide.
Thank you.
Next is Cornelius Wood, to be followed by Prosper Bosley.
As usual, I did not intend to talk with you this evening, but I'd like to say that I'm Cornelius Wood. I'm a resident of the United States and a citizen, former military person, and I'm of Irish, Dutch, English, and German extraction. Presently, I'm a citizen of this country, and that's where my support goes. I would suggest that the folks that have spoken here this evening might want to take up their conversation with Mr. John Garamendi, or either one of their two state senators, or two U.S. senators, where they could do some good. It's not within your purview to act on this. That's it. Good night.
Thank you, Cornelius.
My name is Prosper Bosley, and when I was in Israel in 1957, I was in a mushav off Gaza Strip, and I was 10 years old when I came my first attack by the Gazans coming through, from Haiti. My family in Israel went through the Scuds hitting them in 1991, after Kuwait was invaded by Iraq. President Bush asked them not to retaliate because it would affect the group, or the, what do I want to say, the people, the mission that they had with the Arabs in Kuwait, Saudi Arabia. They were to destroy that coalition. So they understood, they understood all these attacks without retaliation. Israel has a right to exist.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, did anyone else that's here want to speak? I do have 21 hands, 23 hands raised online. Oh, okay.
One minute?
Yes.
You have one minute, sir.
Distinguished members of the city council, I have heard a lot of voices here today, both pro-Israel and pro-Palestine. I would say, as someone with Jewish heritage, that I do not believe the existence of the state of Israel has made me any more safe. I've seen it act as a divisive factor. The reason I call for a ceasefire is due to the fact that the Israeli Defense Force itself has made, including its soldiers, especially its soldiers on social media, have made disturbing posts, celebrating their actions, celebrating the destruction of hospitals, schools, mosques, you name it, celebrating dead children. None of this makes us safer. None of this will lead to any peaceful solution. The reason why I support a ceasefire is because, truthfully, I do not believe having a Jewish state will make us safe. What will make us safe is when all men, whoever they are, Jewish, Christian, you know, Muslim, whatever, are able to be safe, are able to live together.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Can I ask your first name?
My name's Bruce.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else that's here?
Hello, did you ask my name?
What was your name?
Maybe.
Oh, I did call it earlier, and you didn't come up. Okay, go ahead.
Come on up.
Hi, my name is Mercedes. I'm a resident of Fairfield, California, and founder of Solano Unity Network. We are a grassroots organization based in Solano County. We believe in community building through mutual aid and abolition-based practices. We serve the community every Wednesday. We have our community garden. We were asked to come today to let you know of our presence. We also had a rally for Palestine, for Free Palestine, in December, and we had over 100 people attend. The community is large. The community here wants a ceasefire. This is in your jurisdiction. I understand, Captain Moy, you have blocked me on Facebook for asking me to take accountability for your actions. I understand that you won't.
I did not block you.
You did block me on Facebook. I could show you. I actually emailed you with the screenshots, but that's okay.
Thank you. No, please do.
Okay, can I have my time back? Because that...
You've got an extra six seconds. Go.
So I know that you're not going to listen to me, because you do block your constituents online, but please call for a ceasefire and listen to the people that actually live here, not people that come from out of town because someone called them here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, before we move to the people online? We now have 24 hands raised. Okay, Valeria, can you bring the first person online? Thank you.
We have Deborah. You have one minute, followed by Shereen.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Deborah Aeger, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the International Jewish Anti-Zionist Network in support of a ceasefire resolution. We are a diversity of Jewish people who carry the intergenerational trauma of genocide, ethnic cleansing, forced displacement, political, ethnic, and religious persecution. We will not allow our histories to be used for the massacre of Palestinians. This did not start on October 7th, but decades earlier, with the massive ethnic cleansing of three-quarters of the Palestinian population in 1948. In fact, the majority of people being displaced, murdered, starved, and maimed today in Gaza are refugees from what is now Israel. Seventy-five years ago, then the illegal military occupation began in 1967, the siege began in 2006, depriving the entire population of water.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Ceasefire now. Stop the genocide.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, next.
We have Shereen, now followed by Omar Lidded.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shereen Khan. I'm a recony, and I'm participating today as a Fairfield resident, a business owner within Fairfield, and a parent, urging you to support a ceasefire resolution for Gaza. I'm married to a Palestinian-American who is also a healthcare professional who works in Fairfield, and we have two young children, ages one and eight. My husband's grandfather and family was, were forcibly displaced from Palestine by Zionists in 1948. While it may appear that the events in Gaza do not impact residents locally, there has actually been a rise in anti-Muslim and anti-Palestinian hate within the United States. The Council on American-Islamic Relations released new civil rights data that shows it has received 3,578 complaints from October to December 2023. Islamophobic and anti-Arab rhetoric and violence has created an increasingly unsafe environment for our community. I can tell you that every day I worry for the safety of my family amidst such emboldened hatred. As a therapist, I have also seen an increase in individuals reaching out to me, seeking mental health services to address the trauma, grief, and general distress they have been experiencing as they vicariously witness the genocide occurring in Gaza at the hands of Israeli occupation.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Next is Omar. Yes.
Hi, my name is Andrew Lee. I am a university student in the community, and I urge you all to add a ceasefire resolution to your agenda for February 20th. I am Chinese-American, but I only have to be a human being to know that Palestinians in Gaza, the West Bank, and the rest of the world deserve our solidarity and support at a time when unspeakable atrocities are being committed against their community. I have witnessed the destruction of every university in Gaza.
Thank you. Next.
We have Sadaf.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Can you please state your name?
So, my name is Sadaf.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say that ceasefire in Gaza is completely a local issue, because this whole war, aggression by Israel on the Palestinian civilians is being funded with our tax money. Those bombs raining down on those children and their parents are being sent by us, our government. And secondly, respectfully, I would say that if it was your family members getting killed over there, or anywhere in the world, you'd be the first one to call for a ceasefire. And...
Hello?
Ms.?
Hi, I got dropped, I guess. Can I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the only difference between the leaders, politicians, officials, who are not calling for a ceasefire, knowing full well that this is being funded by our government, is that we are calling for a ceasefire while our family members are not dying there. But we are calling for it because we see the humanity. We are humans, they are humans, and we know that hostages, this is not going to benefit anyone.
Your time is up now. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Lif Thaya.
Go ahead.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to thank you for celebrating Black History Month and Chinese Lunar New Year. Earlier in the meeting, I also celebrate and uplift them. And from the International Criminal Justice Courts, to the federal courts in Oakland, institutions that govern our society are increasingly criticizing Israel's atrocity in Gaza and the U.S.'s complicity in this genocide. We've reached 121 days plus 75 years of Israel's genocidal occupation in Palestine. The number of Palestinians who've been killed, in particular the number of children, is a staggering 12,000 children. Recent World Health Organization estimates puts the number of dead and missing under the rubble at over 100,000 innocent people. This is a local issue. It is, it is an issue for all of us, and we do not want to be complicit in this genocide.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Ceasefire now, please. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next one is Mary Tad.
Okay, go ahead, Mary.
Hello, I'm sorry, my name is May Tad. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I am a speech-language pathologist working in an outpatient neurorehab setting here in the area, and I urge you to call for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza, Palestine. The fundamental principles of healthcare, including speech therapy, are rooted in promoting human rights and dignity. The systemic oppression and violence experienced by individuals in Palestine violate these principles. Healthcare professionals have a moral obligation to stand against such violations. Speech therapists often work with marginalized and vulnerable populations, including individuals with disabilities, refugees, and those affected by the genocide in Palestine. Recognizing and addressing these populations injustices is essential for promoting social justice and equitable access to healthcare services to the people that we serve here in our community. Being aware and advocating for the rights of individuals with diverse backgrounds affected by genocide and human right violations contributes to more an inclusive and responsive healthcare environment within our local community. It is my professional responsibility to advocate for ethical and humanitarian principles. This includes raising awareness about human rights violations and supporting initiatives for peace and justice, and speaking out against discrimination and oppression in all forms, especially since there has been a huge rise in Islamophobia.
Your time is up.
Anti-Semitism, antisemitism. Ceasefire now. Free Palestine.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next one is Mary.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Assalamu alaikum. Hello, my name is Mary, and I am a Palestinian speech-language pathologist in the medical setting. I am here to urge the city council to adopt a ceasefire resolution. Currently, 30,500 Palestinians in Gaza have been killed by the Israeli occupation since October 7th. This number includes more than 13,000 children and at least 339 medical staff. More than 65,000 people have been injured, hundreds of which are critically wounded with no safe place for rehabilitation. On average, one kid is killed every 10 minutes, and 10 children are undergoing amputations for at least one limb every day with no anesthesia. There has been a 300% increase in miscarriages. Those who are delivering are doing so with no postpartum care and having to undergo no, c-sections with no anesthesia due to the illegal siege on Gaza. Only 14 of the 36 hospitals are partially functioning. Those ones in the south are operating at three times their capacity. As a healthcare professional, I implore the city council to be on the right side of history and call for an immediate ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Vish.
Thank you. Go ahead, Vish.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, good evening, my name is Vish. I'm a lawyer and a proud member of UAW Local 2320, a nationwide union of legal services workers. We have members living or working right here in Solano County, including in Fairfield. This council must take action tonight to join the approximately 55 other U.S. cities that already have demanded a ceasefire and entry of humanitarian aid into Gaza. That is the absolute bare minimum we should be doing as people who can hopefully agree that genocide and mass displacement are wrong. Last month, by international union, the UAW joined over 150 labor organizations representing millions of Americans in calling for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Thousands of workers such as myself are enraged as we see our government so readily giving billions of dollars of our money to an Israeli government that oppresses and massacres Palestinians, already subject to a brutal military occupation and the yoke of apartheid segregation on a daily basis, while state and local governments here claw and clamor to pursue frumps.
Your time is up, sir.
Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one doesn't show the name.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Our community has been clamoring for support from our city officials and asking, what is local leadership doing to support us? Safety, protection, hope, justice, equality, these are basic human rights. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, this is what this great nation was built on. Thank you for the Boy Scouts, and thank you for all the veterans that have served this country well. These are the same pursuits that the people of Gaza and Philistine are fighting for and living through genocide for. Why can't we support those that are dying for the same freedoms using our tax dollars and weapons? This nation was built on standing up for our rights and our freedoms. As Alexander Hamilton said, "When you stand for nothing, you fall for everything." Let us stop funding the evil war machine with our taxpayer money, pray for the ceasefire that can save lives and rescue all those that lie under the rubble, that are going hungry and homeless, and provide a quick return to peace in the region for all Palestinians and Israelis. If we do not take a stand for humanity and lift our voices and take a stand now...
Your time is up, sir.
Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Next one is Jillian Ashward.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, I've been a resident of Fairfield for about 10 years. As a Jewish-American and as an Israeli citizen, I say not in my name.
Thank you.
When we say, oh, I wasn't done.
All right.
When we say never again, it means never again anywhere. Many of my family members were murdered during the Holocaust, so as a Jew, I must speak out for Palestinians in Gaza. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next one is Desiana Torres.
Go ahead, Desiana.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. So my name is Desiana Torres. I am an author, advocate, and mentor for many children who we see as a nation trying to save them as well. I call for a permanent ceasefire. So born and raised in an urban community, it's so different because we realize that it truly does take a village to raise our next generations. Urban communities are so full of oppressed folks who get it, that violence meant with violence changes nothing. And so for my short time, I want to share a story that I felt can be relatable for many of us here. At a young age, I sit on my grandma's... At a young age, I sit on my grandma's porch alongside her. I saw the way that she loved on our neighborhood kids, the ones who didn't always have a meal to eat or clean clothes to wear. Most lived and survived in ecosystems of violence. When their parents fought, we didn't dare to blame the children, the ones who suffered the most. What we lacked is compassion and perspective. My grandma would prepare plates for food for them, would wash their clothes, and always sent them back with a warm hug so that they knew that they were loved and special. She loved on those babies like it was her own, and in my life, that modeled something so powerful for me that although there were many differences and we come from all different backgrounds... I appreciate it. In closing, I'm going to share for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is Nurse Nushat.
Thank you, go ahead, nurse. Hello?
Please unmute your mic.
Please unmute your mic.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm a citizen and I've lived in and served the Bay Area community for over 16 years. As I in my days caring for patients as a nurse regardless of their race, religion, or ethnicity, I can't help but cry for the people of Gaza live streaming their genocide today. I urge the city council to author a permanent ceasefire for everlasting peace and release of all hostages. Why does this affect us? We can't let our hard-earned billions of tax dollars fund a genocide when our own healthcare, homeless, and veterans need support. Islamophobia, Palestinian hate, and antisemitism is exponentially on the rise in the Bay Area. Bay Area citizens have lost thousands of their family back home. This is about protecting our children back home and abroad. When we said "never again," let's truly mean it. Gaza today, 122 days of bombing today, over 35,000 Palestinians killed, over 13,000 children killed, thousands critically wounded, doctors and journalists killed and missing, over 24 hospitals and ambulances bombed and left unfunctional, 110 humanitarian aid trucks bombed and left...
Your time is up, miss.
Leaving Palestinians at the brink of a famine. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Next one is Camille Santana.
Go ahead, Camille.
Hello, good evening. My name is Camille. I'm a community college faculty with a coalition of college faculty, staff, and students for Free Palestine Across California. My family lives in Fairfield. I call for a permanent ceasefire now. Now is the time. It is always time to do what is right, just like Dr. MLK said. I want to remind you that doing what is right and just has always been met with resistance by those who benefit from the status quo and white supremacy. MLK and Nelson Mandela were also labeled terrorists for fighting for justice. I want to close with reading a list of ceasefire resolutions I have passed in the US. Hamtramck, Michigan, October. Richmond, California, October. Providence, Rhode Island, November. Cudahy, California, November 7. Harborough, North Carolina, November 14. Wilmington, Delaware, November 14. President Biden's hometown, Wilmington, Delaware, November 16. Atlanta, Georgia, November 20. Akron, Ohio, November 20.
Miss. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Nadia Power.
Go ahead, Nadia.
Hi, my name is Nadia. I'm a healthcare worker and mother of two. I just want to address what's being said directly on the opposing side, saying that the city shouldn't be meddling in foreign affairs when we mention that the tax dollars are being used there. So that is a local issue. If that was the case, then the US should also not be funding this foreign affair either and supplying them with bombs. But that's not the case. That is what the US is doing. And apartheid and genocide is not okay to fund. Also, this is a local issue because it's affecting California residents here in our community, Jewish, Muslim, and Arab people who are feeling unsafe, facing racism, and violence here. It's upsetting all of us enough to show up here today. So much hate is fueled by this war. If you actually care about people on both sides, ceasefire is imperative. Also, I know others have referenced Hamas as a reason to not have ceasefire. I have to believe that anyone saying this doesn't know that the Israeli operation is failing at targeting Hamas and primarily just the destruction is civilian buildings, churches, mosques, schools, hospitals, with no evidence of targets actually being there. I have to believe that anyone saying not to support ceasefire has not seen images of children burned with body parts being recovered by their siblings so that some thing would be left... Ceasefire now, please.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kalau Nasser.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I survived three Israeli invasions in Lebanon and witnessed the tragic journey of a pacifist friend who was tortured in Israeli prison in occupied southern Lebanon in the 90s in a prison they took even before Hamas emerged. The threat of safety for Arabs and Jews is colonization. How privileged it is to be here deciding if it's even appropriate or divisive to propose a ceasefire for innocent Palestinian civilians who are being killed and under the rubble and starved and frozen to death and displaced by those who get offended by a chant that dreams of freedom. And these people have already endured more than 75 years of colonization and 16 years of siege. How cruel can we be to even think to turn our backs and not to try our best and follow the lead of those who have called for a ceasefire? This is a genocide funded by US money. It is a local issue. It is not any world problem. It is created by US and the Western colonial project and should be dismantled right here. I urge you to call for a ceasefire and end of the Israeli colonization. As a therapist, I'm working a lot on trauma of anti-Arab racism right here for our Arab-American community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ellen Brodsky.
Go ahead, Ellen.
I'm speaking on behalf of Jewish Voice for Peace Bay Area with over 25,000 members and supporters in the greater Bay Area, including in Fairfield. We support an immediate and permanent ceasefire. As Jews, we recognize from our own history what genocide looks like. So we know it is our duty to oppose Israel's genocide against the Palestinian people. We cannot be silent, and we ask that you not be silent. Our government is supporting Israel and its genocidal campaign. Our tax dollars are funding the weapons our government is sending to the Israeli military. Instead of sending billions of military aid to Israel, our federal government must use its influence with Israel to bring about a permanent ceasefire. Local elected officials can help this happen by passing ceasefire resolutions, responding to their constituents who want the violence to stop. Israel is not the Jewish people. It does not represent the Jewish people. Criticism of Israel based on its past and present actions is not antisemitic. Please stand with Jews who reject genocidal violence as Jews...
Your time is up.
...understand the root of the violence is Israel's occupation and apartheid policies. Ceasefire now.
Next one is Ed R.
Go ahead, Ed.
Okay, could you understand? Yes, hello. So I want to echo, you know, the deep history that the previous speaker has given and all the other speakers. And, you know, want to bring up again the legacy of Martin Luther King, right? In light of celebrating Black History Month, as you did in the beginning, and really take in his words about white supremacy, right? And his words assailing the white moderate and their preference for a negative peace that calls for a lack of tension and discomfort versus a positive peace that calls for the establishment of real justice, which the Palestinian people do not have, right? And that there is this great asymmetry, this chasm in military power.
Your time is up, sir.
Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Lawrence Grossman.
Go ahead, Lawrence.
Good evening. My name is Lawrence Grossman. With the agenda matter tonight concerning Gaza, I fail to comprehend why this city council would agendize such a contentious international crisis so far from its jurisdiction and likely its core competencies and which it cannot influence. Instead, I hope you will endorse the wise initiative of Mayor Moy to pass a resolution limiting Fairfield from taking positions on matters outside of its jurisdiction such as federal foreign policy. That would enhance the good governance foundations of the city of Fairfield. Tonight, tragic as the situations are in Gaza and is, no one speaking in support of a ceasefire expressed opposition to Hamas, called for Hamas to surrender to save Palestinian lives or condemn the October barbaric slaughter of innocents by Hamas terrorists, most called for the elimination...
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Naomi Smaller.
Go ahead, Naomi.
Eli Weisal, quote, "And now scarcely 10 years after Buchenwald, I realize that the world forgets quickly. Today, Germany is a sovereign state. The German army has been resuscitated. Ilse Koch, the notorious sadistic monster of Buchenwald, was allowed to have children and live happily ever after. War criminals stroll through the streets of Habsburg and Munich. The past seems to have been erased, relegated to oblivion. Today, the Israeli soldiers that liquidate the ghetto of Gaza will presumably go to sleep with their bellies full. Someday, they may even return to their homes, walk amongst regular civilians. The policymakers who voted to defund UNRWA and guarantee famine by the end of February to 2.3 million people will presumably go to sleep comfortable in their beds, bellies full."
Thank you.
Next speaker, Sudip Purwaw.
Go ahead, Sudip.
Hi, thank you. Dear City Council, I'm a resident of Fairfield, parent and local business owner. I'm asking you to stand on the right side of history as compassionate representatives of the diverse people of this city. We need to apply pressure for a ceasefire at any and every level of government to send a strong message to our broader elected officials. At least 70 cities have done so and international governments and countries. The vast majority of people support ceasefire. This is clearly within your jurisdiction as other cities have taken a stand and our tax funds are literally supporting this genocide, and it is unacceptable. Not to mention, we have beloved Palestinians in our community calling for your protection. I wonder during the hundreds of years of indigenous genocide, slavery, Jim Crow segregation, how many people turned a blind eye because it wasn't relevant to their roles and that somebody else would address it? We cannot kill our way to a safer, dignified world. I would be a proud Fairfieldian if you stood on the right side. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Naomi Smaller.
I think Naomi spoke already. And Sudip. I think we're on Susan Cohen Grossman.
We have Susan Cohen Grossman.
Thank you. Go ahead, Susan.
Hello, good evening. My name is Susan Cohen Grossman. I've lived in Solano County over 30 years. I worked in Fairfield for 16 of the 30. I'm very clear on my views that the city council has the opportunity tonight and going forward to reduce divisiveness and hatred in our community. I support the goals of peace and humanitarian relief. I also know, as we've discussed tonight, that Hamas attacked and invaded Israel and continues to, and continues to continue. Right now, asking Israel to stop protecting itself and its citizens is equivalent to supporting Hamas's terrorist attacks. The city weighing in on this really is weighing in with federally official, federal, excuse me, federally elected officials about foreign affairs. It's really beyond the scope of the city of Fairfield. At the local level, I would hope that the city of Fairfield elected officials would focus on promoting peace and understanding through building cross-conversations, exchanging views, and making efforts to understand and heal our local community. I feel like tonight, the opposite has happened. Any resolution this council might take regarding a tragic war... Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Janet Naden.
Go ahead, Janet.
Okay, thank you. My name's Janet Naden. I'm a retired teacher of Solano County. I just want to say I'm against any type of resolution at the city council level. It's the goal of some groups to go from council, city councils to city councils to get as many under their belts of these resolutions passed. Let us remember that Hamas, on October 7, didn't quite achieve a certain goal. Their goal was to infiltrate all of Israel and kill thousands and thousands, not just killed. There's different levels. We're talking the most brutal atrocities, of which 45 minutes of a video was presented at the International Court in the Hague, and they themselves did not call for a ceasefire. It's a very complex issue, and it should not be at a local level. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Janetti.
Go ahead, Janet.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, can you hear?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Michaela McFarlane. I am a 10-year-old and a fourth grader. To me, it is sad that this is such a big deal that I have to know that, to me, a genocide is happening and that America is using our tax funds to rule it and use weapons to make the genocide happen. And that I know that thousands and thousands of children are being killed a day in one place in the world. Thank you. Ceasefire.
Thank you, miss.
Next speaker, have no name.
Go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kemal. In commemorating Black History Month, we honor the valor of those who through sacrifice confronted discrimination and bigotry, shaping their path to equality. We find that progress hinges on acknowledging and others in these injustices. I'm sure in the modern world, in the future, had we stayed silent and dismissed these atrocities that have been as not relevant to this, we would not be where we are today. In 2014, this man too said, "I know firsthand that there has been an apartheid reality within its borders and through its occupation. The parallels to my own beloved South Africa are painfully stark indeed." Nelson Mandela in 1997 said, "We know too well that our freedom is incomplete without the freedom of the Philistines." Rosa Parks said, Rosa Parks, who got galed before actually standing for her freedom, "You must never be fearful about what you are doing when it's right. Isn't standing for the oppressed right?" Black poet June Jordan said, "Palestine is a moral litmus test for the war."
Your time is up, sir.
Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Omar.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, honorable members of the city council and Madam Mayor. Thank you for hearing us tonight. Tonight, I urge you to look into your heart and really vote with your moral compass and urge for a permanent and lasting ceasefire. When will you truly see us? We live in unprecedented times. Antonio Guterres of the UN Secretary General said, "Nowhere is safe in Gaza," and that Gaza has become a graveyard for children. The International Court of Justice has concerned that plausible genocide is occurring and has issued a warning to Israel with six provisional measures to prevent genocide. How many more of us need to die? Over 120 days of war on Gaza, then the West Bank had witnessed at least over 27,000 civilians killed, 10,000 being children and 7,000 women. The restriction of food, water, and electricity is an humanitarian aid to the Palestinian people consists of collective punishment. The use of chemical weapons in densely populated civilian areas constitute war crimes. The displacement of civilians...
Your time is up, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Anne.
Hello, I'm speaking tonight as a pediatrician. I'm identifying my occupation to make it clear that I value life. I say that specifically because I've seen in the last four months that unfortunately, not everyone values all life or considers all people worthy of saving. I wanted to encourage the City Council today to stand for the children and innocent Palestinian lives in Gaza. The death toll of Palestinians has risen to over 30,000 now, and it's been four months of horror. Israel has decimated the entire healthcare system of Gaza, has destroyed homes so that Palestinians do not have shelter to turn to, places of worship have not been spared, people have been made to disappear, and Israel has not allowed food and water and electricity into Gaza. They are starving children. This has been done with our money and the support of our government. This is a Fairfield issue. Instead of using that money for terror abroad, we should use it for our communities for safety, security, housing, and healthcare. It's incumbent on our leaders to stand for humanity. The bare minimum is calling for a ceasefire. Please do not let your citizens go unheard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Hanin Ali.
Go ahead, Hanin.
Oh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Hanin. I'm a Palestinian-American. I wanted to ask the people who are opposing a ceasefire or if anybody is considering not voting for a ceasefire, how many more should die until people are satisfied? I want people to sit with that. 100,000 Palestinians are either killed, injured, or are missing, presumably dead. It terrifies me that the ethnic cleansing of my people is being argued over, and it takes begging of several constituents for people in power to consider giving a symbolic gesture to call for the killing to stop. This should be the easiest call to make in your careers. Free Palestine. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Hina.
Go ahead.
Hi, yeah. Hi, my name is Hina Faruk. I'm a Fairfield resident and also a local business owner. We're going on over 120 days of straight bombing now. This war is on the children of Gaza, and our U.S. tax dollars are supporting a complete genocide of the Palestinian people. We need to take every step possible to support an end to the killing and to figure out a better way to move forward. Our humanity demands that we feel the suffering of others and act accordingly. A ceasefire is the bare minimum at this point. Family lineages have been killed off, some of the world's oldest churches have been destroyed, and Christian Palestinians are on the verge of extinction. We need to simply just stop the bombings so the people can breathe and get the aid they desperately need at this point. Zionists can blame Hamas all they want, but there is no justification for the suffering that Israel is intentionally causing on the innocent people of Palestine. When you see soldiers posting TikToks enjoying the murdering and torturing of people and saying they will wipe out the whole Gaza Strip, there's clearly something very wrong going on. We do not need foreign policy expertise to know killing people, and allowing one child to die every six minutes is completely wrong. We need to start at the local level and ask our local leadership, you guys, to hear our voices.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Asia Abdaman.
Go ahead, AJ.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm on the bus, so it's a little bit loud. Yeah, I've been listening to people say that for the security of Israel, is it really the security of Israel to kill 30,000 people? To kill 30,000 people, to kill over 12,000 children? Ceasefire now. Kids, say ceasefire now.
Ceasefire now.
Rahim, say ceasefire now.
Ceasefire now.
Killing children is unacceptable. That is not security. That is not care for your community. It's enough already. It's more than 123 days. It's 124. Rafah, right now, is under attack. 1.5 million people in tents being blown up. That is not security. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lan N.
Hi, my name is, okay, let me start again. Hi, my name is Lan Ngo, and I live here in our beautiful city of Fairfield. I am a child of Vietnamese refugees. I talked to my dad about Palestine, and he said that after he fled Vietnam on a boat, came to America, learned English, got a law degree. He learned for himself and came to the conclusion that American involvement in Vietnam was actually illegal and immoral. The long legacy of protesters against American involvement in Vietnam came from people just like us, right now, sitting in humble cities across America, deciding that our tax dollars should not go to bombing innocent civilians in lands so far from us. City Council members, you truly are powerful. Powerful to send a ripple across time and to the federal level that we stand for peace. Some people say standing for ceasefire will be divisive or that it will be anti-Semitic. Absolutely not. I think it'll mean that the City Council believes we stand for peace and we believe in better solutions than war. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Noelle Loez.
Hello, everyone. I work with youth at Fairfield County Unified School District, and I look at youth every day. And I look at these youth, and I'm like, these youth have the privilege to live, whereas youth across the world do not have that privilege. Many don't make it to tomorrow. And I want you to think about this, because you are all elected officials. People elected you in these positions. You have a duty to your community. And for the people who say that this is not an issue for City Council, do cities not make up a state? Do states not make up a country? If we all stand united, that sends a message. Thank you. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Is that the last person, Valeria?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else in here who would like to speak, who hasn't spoken yet? And nobody else online? Is that right?
There are no hands.
I have two more now.
Oh, wait, now two hands are raised. It did indicate zero. Okay, put the first one through, please. Thank you.
We have RJ.
Go ahead, RJ. Go ahead, RJ.
Hi, yes, thank you. I work in public health, like many other people who've spoken tonight, and I work statewide. I work in a field called harm reduction, where we work with really the most demonized, underrepresented, oppressed, abandoned people in the state. And it's, you know, people who are living in tents right now during this atmospheric river, people who are living along the railroad tracks and under the freeways all across California. And I'm so, on the one hand, saddened to say that we know that part of the reason why people can't care about people in Palestine is because people don't care and just step over and around and drive past the folks who are living in tents, who are refugees of gentrification.
Your time is up, ma'am.
From other places here. So I just want to say, please call for a ceasefire. Ceasefire, this is an international issue.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you.
We are part of the international community.
Thank you.
We are part of the globe. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Free Palestine.
Okay, I don't show any more hands. Is that the last one, Valeria?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and close up the public comment then. And I am going to bring this back for discussion here. What I want to do is thank everybody for being polite and good. It really made me happy, and I appreciate all of you, and I heard all of you. And I know many of you are hurting, and many of you have fear on all sides here. We recognize that. I do. And it is heartbreaking what's going on in the Middle East, not just there, but there are other wars that are going on in the Middle East. There are wars going on in the Congo that we also fund, where some 7 million people have died already. There are over 100 wars, and we're funding many of them. And that's disgusting. And everybody who brings it up, you're absolutely correct. It's called the military-industrial complex, and we've been warned about it. And whenever I can, I do speak with our congresspeople about this. There's reason for defense budget. We're proud to have Travis here. But these things that are going on around the world, we could spend literally every City Council meeting colleagues talking about the wars around the world that we fund right now. I looked into them, and that's not our purview. That's not what we're hired to do. So I'm gonna hear from each of you, but I just want to bring your attention to the policy that I put in front of you, that is actually from the city of San Jose. And this was effective as of July 10, 1979. And the reasons why they did this was to provide guidelines for the City Council's consideration of requests for action upon matters over which the city lacks jurisdiction. Of course, we feel for everybody here. Of course, we want everybody to be happy, and we don't like to see the pain. It's emotional. I'm an empath, so I think about you all all the time. So I'm gonna just bring it back to the council. I'd like you to take a look at this. This is something that I'd like to put on our next agenda. And so take a look at it, if you will. And I will go ahead and open it up to you all. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. I need about a minute to read this, but while I was kind of resetting gears, I want to thank you for running a meeting, you know, a tough meeting with decency and decorum. I was told that, you know, there would be hate talk, and, you know, that it would just take a different turn, and it didn't. People were able to speak their minds and speak their hearts, coming from different sides. Susan George, you said something in the beginning, that you could see and feel the community trauma and pain from both sides. And I do too. We do too. So anyway, I just needed a minute to reset, but just kind of get that out of my system.
Thank you. And it was only difficult because of the issue and the pain, and because people have lost loved ones, and we've had children from both sides, I recognize, at our schools here in Fairfield, who've been hurt emotionally or physically. And so, again, this has to do with the citizens, the people who came here, decent people. Every one of you stood up and said what you needed to say. I'm sorry, we couldn't give you longer. We had, I think, more speakers tonight than we've had in years, probably. But it's something that is good to hear, as painful as it is. So does anybody else have something to say now?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilman Vacara.
Yeah, first of all, I do want to thank everybody who spoke tonight. You know, this is such an emotional issue. Back on December 19, I believe, our last meeting in December, I had mentioned that, you know, I would love to see a permanent ceasefire, because, and by permanent, I mean permanent. I think Mr. Takiyoshi brought up armistice right after that. You know, if you look at what's going on in Gaza right now, I mean, what Hamas did obviously was horrible. Everybody knows that. But also, killing young children and killing babies and killing people, you know, like nonstop, is horrible, too. And it's a bad situation over there. You know, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of my colleagues. I'm just speaking for myself. I think that any resolution we come up with, whether it's the one from San Jose or another one, you know, one thing, as a council person, we shouldn't be silenced, our opinions or our voices. You know, we have to say how we feel. I said how I felt back in December, and I'm still saying it. You know, I'm not sure what the answer is gonna be with the City Council, but I do know one thing. It really breaks my heart when I look at the news every day, every day, and I see how many people are dying in that area. And, you know, people can point fingers at each other and blame each other and, you know, talk about the history, because there is history. There's real history there. I understand that. And I know people say that, you know, we have to, and I think this is actually probably shared by a lot of people, that it's not our business. I think it really is our business to at least have the compassion to think about what's going on, because we can't turn a blind eye to what's going on in the world. Then who are we if we do that? You know, I mean, we're just not robots up here and saying, okay, all we gotta do is look at what's going on in Fairfield. I understand that. I understand that we have authority within the city of Fairfield. I get that, to make the rules and change the rules. But no one should tell us how we feel about international situations. And all I can tell you, the way I feel, is that I would, you know, all the bombings and the killings that are going on right now have to stop over there. I mean, that's really, you know, and like I said, I've been saying that all along. So I'll let my other colleagues speak. I just needed to say that. And if I need to say more, I'll say it later. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Everyone who spoke tonight, I think we had about 85 people in combination in these chambers and online. And so I want to thank you for taking the time to come and to speak with us, your City Council. We are your City Council. You know, some of the speakers this evening mentioned Black History Month and invoked Dr. King and the principles that he stood for to support their position on this very complex issue. And so, since others, you know, spoke on Dr. King's behalf, I guess I'm eligible to do that as well. And what I will say is this about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. His primary tenet and his complete strategic objective was nonviolence. And I think that Dr. King would not condone violence on any side of this issue if he were sitting in this room this evening. I'll say that. That Dr. King stood for massive diplomacy. It's why we have the laws on the books now, or at least part of the reasons that we do, that we're able to have a meeting like this in open mics and in open meeting rooms with the diversity of representation that we have in this room. He stood for that. And he stood for dialogue, consensus building. You know, it wasn't just black people who got us across the finish line for the Civil Rights Act, across that Edmund Pettus Bridge, you know, voting rights. It was a conglomerate of people who were able to work together. So I come to the issue of, is this a City of Fairfield issue? I actually sat here in tally tonight, and there were more yes votes for the ceasefire than no votes. But I do take pause with this question, is this a City of Fairfield issue? And here's where I stand on it. I know that I've sat on this day as for years and heard us tout the diversity of the city of Fairfield, heard us tout the multiculturalism of the city of Fairfield. We're one of the most diverse cities in Northern California. So that means we have Christians. That means we have Muslims. That means- That means we have Jewish people. That means we have black people, white people, women, men, children. That means that when a resident of this city comes to me, and I don't care if you're in District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or 6, if you're a City of Fairfield resident, I will not turn my ear and say I won't listen. There's no way on earth I'll ever do that, because we work for you. So when you come to a City of Fairfield meeting, or you come to one of us on this dais and say, "I fear for my safety in school. I fear for myself at the mall. I'm concerned about the divisiveness of a resolution, a ceasefire resolution. I agree with Rick Vaccaro." At least the city council has to have the compassion to hear that, and we serve you as our residents. So we need to ask ourselves up here, what do we do about that? I'm not gonna just say, "I don't want to deal with it. It's foreign policy," because you live here. Palestinians live here. Jewish people live here. And we are all equal if we are thinking about what Dr. King had to say about American history and the United States Constitution, which all binds us together under a general concept of democracy. So my, you know, I don't know, like, I don't know what the city council is going to do with this, but as long as I'm on this city council and you are a resident of the city of Fairfield, you've got my ear. And, you know, I heard some things this evening that I think I agree with. This will be, I believe this will be a divisive issue in the city. I'm just being honest. This is just my opinion. I think if we do or we don't, it's gonna be divisive either way. But have we really put in the work to take a vote on something this serious right now? Have we put in the work? Have we had the conversations? Can we talk? Have we gotten together with forums and really thought about things that will bring us together as a community and maybe model that to the rest of the world? How about that? Can we bring our voices together? We haven't done that work. We haven't had that dialogue. This city council has not contemplated activities to bring consciousness and knowledge to this very complicated issue that our residents are dealing with. We live here together. We have to live here together. I'm not willing to say the city of Fairfield, this city council can do nothing, because you matter. Your opinions matter. And you put us in these seats to help not just this one or that one. Every resident, in my opinion, has equal status under the law. We all have to, if you believe in Dr. King. I think he would endorse that statement. So let's, you know, I think this, tonight is a good start. I think it's a good start. Everybody here was passionate, made me want to cry so many times, but you know what? Everyone was respectful. We heard each other. We respected each other's opinions. I think that's a good start. But I won't say, and I haven't looked at this resolution, Mayor, from San Jose, and I want time to really look at it, as just me gleaning over it, it's very broadly written. So like the first one says, matters concerning foreign policy of the United States, the city council can't deal with. But if we have Jewish members of the city of Fairfield or Palestinian residents of the city of Fairfield, and they have concerns about the impact of that on them here, this says we can't deal with it. I don't agree. I don't agree. I mean, I understand that we have our issues that we need to, you know, focus on, the bread and butter issues of our everyday lives. I'm saying because something over there is affecting you here does not mean that its effect on you here doesn't matter to us. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to ask ourselves, what can we do? How can we, at least on our municipal level, what can we do to help address your concerns? And that may be relationship building. That may be having dialogue. I think it's got to start there. We have to talk, because the intensities on both sides of this issue are blatant. We have to be able to talk together. So I'm gonna leave it for there right now, and once again, I think that, you don't have to take my word for it. Look at anything Martin Luther King Jr. has ever written. Look at any speech, the great orator he's ever given, and it starts right there. Yeah. It starts with us working together. So for now, that's what I have to say. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Pandora?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, again, for sharing your voices on both sides. I know a lot of times it's not easy coming up to the podium. It can be a little nerve-wracking, but I know that we appreciate each and every voice that does come up. We were elected by you, and I think I come from the sense of, I think that question of, what can we do together, so community really resonates within me. Because if we start looking and considering all the issues that are going on right now, I think of DACA kids. I think of the kids that come to this country and they can't do anything. I think of the families at the border. What are we doing about that? I have constituents that are living in the shadows because they can't afford, they can't get jobs. Like, there's all these issues that are going on, and I don't think if we have a resolution one way or another, like, that's, you know, quieting our voices. I think there are other ways that we can go about bringing community together, and I think maybe that's the conversation that we should be having. Because, yes, this is happening right now, and it's awful. It's awful on both sides. But there's also other things that are happening in the world that I wake up to and learn about, or I, my heart aches. You know, I'm first generation of this country, and not because, anyways. My parents ran from things, too. And so I get that. But we are a diverse community, and so being able to have this discussion tonight, you know, it was a step forward, as hard as it was, as long as it was. And whichever way we go, just know that we do stand with you. We are here for you. We want to hear you. We want to listen. And so that's, those are my thoughts right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else? Okay. So I want you to know that with this resolution, I am going to put it on an agenda coming up. I'm going to agendize it, and we can vote on it then. What I'd like you guys to do is look at it and see things in it that you like and you don't like, and let David down. And? Yeah, you just got assigned. That's why he's the staff. There are things in here, obviously, that we all have, every one of us have First Amendment. We have public comment when people come in. And on top of it with this resolution, and it doesn't have to be included, but council members or the council itself can write declaratory letters about things and then send it to people who can actually impact this, and that's our congresspeople. And you can do that now. So this is not the end. It was a good talk here, but I will be putting this, and so I'd like you guys to read it, and then staff will fashion something that we can chew on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Can I ask for clarification for staff's sake?
Yes.
You've used the term "resolution" a number of times.
Yes.
And what we have before us that you've presented to the council today for consideration is a policy. As you know, a resolution is usually a statement indicating a position of the city council on a specific issue.
Right.
A policy is a council policy that, under the government code, the city council can govern its own affairs through the establishment of various policies.
Yes.
Which is supposed to help guide the council in governing the city.
Right.
So there is a difference between a resolution and a policy.
Yes.
So I just want to clarify for staff as they work on this. Are you asking them to draft a policy?
A council resolution policy. That's what they called it in San Jose.
Okay.
And so, yeah, that's what I will be doing, and I'll talk to you guys more about it. But as far as the issue that's in front of us today, does anybody want to make a motion to call for ceasefire right now? Yes, Councilwoman?
So what can we do? What are the next steps? And Vice Mayor, like, what you said was so powerful, being, because I was feeling that for these last few hours, that this feels like a powerful start, but I guess I'm too new to know.
No, you're not too new. It's confusing. You could meet with the people, you know, a couple of you or three, whoever wants to do that. I always listen to people, and I will straighten out. Somebody said I block them. I don't usually block people, so I don't know what happened there, but if it is blocked, I'll unblock them. But I listen to people. We all do. That's part of our job. But we have, last week, Elm's person died on our linear trail. And we had a woman raped inside her house by a stranger in our city. And those are things that we should be working on. And, yeah, go ahead.
You did say something that made a lot of sense. And one of the things is, is I have some constituents that have weighed in on this on my email, and one of them is from the Ukraine, and they wanted to start bringing resolutions to stop the invasion of Russia to the Ukraine. I've had some other things about the abortion issue. I've had some other things about the border issue that we've talked about. And I just think it's very important that regardless of what we do, we stay focused on what we were elected. I was put in this chair to do one thing, and that is to speak for the people in the 3rd district.
Yes.
Okay? Sure, we can have an opinion on world affairs, but that's not what I was voted in to do. Okay? I know that, because they've reached out to me. There is horrific wars all over the place. The Ukraine is, these guys are fighting for inches, and I feel for everybody that spoke tonight. Children die, I have two daughters. I've seen all these pictures, people holding up little girls. It just tears my heart out. I have two little girls. They're not so little anymore. They graduated college. But is it our place to discuss all these? I mean, how can we just discuss what's going on in Palestine and not discuss what's going on in other places as well as an open-minded and open city council? There's horrific things going on at the border. That's only gonna get worse. If we keep focusing, if we go, I just want to say, if we go down this path as a team, I'm with you 100%, but I think we need to be realistic about where we're going with making decisions on foreign policy and other things outside of our beloved city. I love Fairfield. I'm here for Fairfield. I'm an American citizen. I loved when our, excuse me if I say it, my old timers here, Cornelius, American citizen. Okay? And so I just would like to touch on that, that there are other horrific things going on in the world, and where do we draw the line? Okay? We can't just do one thing and expect to not look at other atrocities. So where, do you see where I'm going with this?
Yes.
It can be, take us out of our scope. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
I agree with you. And I'll say that I also agree with Councilman Vaccaro in that he made a statement, and that back in December, and that's something that we all can do and will continue to do. I'm sure none of us are gonna be silent about these things when they're on our conscience, on our soul. But anyway, so Madam Vice Mayor, you had something else you wanted to say?
I wanted to address Councilmember Williams, the last end of her comment, which is like, so kind of what can we do, maybe what are next steps? And so I'm a copious note taker, and during your comments, I wrote down some of the things that you mentioned that we can do as a city council that is clearly and unequivocally within our purview as city leaders, to say that as residents of this city, we hear you, we care about you, and we work for you. That's just, that's how it works. So here are some of the things City of Fairfield, one of the speakers said. All people deserve safety.
Amen.
Now, public safety, there's something that we can do in our purview, right?
Yes.
So for students and parents of students, I can't imagine Dylan and Tyler Bertani going to a public school, coming home and telling me, their mom, "Oh, I'm scared to go to class because somebody called me a nigger or whatever and threw this or that at me." Guess where mommy would be the very next day? You best believe at the public school. You know? Our students should not have to tolerate that. Can we do something about that?
We can talk to the school board.
And can we, as the City of Fairfield, do something maybe in unison? I mean, there are possibilities, folks. There are possibilities for us to reflect instead of the symbolic gesture or whatever that says ceasefire now, and the continued killing goes on and on and on. Can we do something in this city to reflect back to the world what we're talking about? Not just, of course we can, Cornelius. Of course we can. So what we can do is we can, Councilwoman Williams, to address your question, we can begin those conversations. What can we do to fortify the public safety of our Jewish and Palestinian residents in the city of Fairfield? They pay the bills, just like you and me. We all do. We work for you, and that includes our Jewish brothers and sisters, our Palestinian brothers and sisters. We have to live in the city of Fairfield together. I think we can get about having the conversations to talk about what that actually looks like. I mean, not just words and not just symbolisms, no offense, but I mean action, that we can reflect back to the world and say, this is how we get down in Fairfield. We're not just gonna push this away. No, we're gonna have the hard conversations, and we're gonna say every kid in school deserves to be safe. And we're gonna say every resident who goes to the mall deserves to be able to go to the mall without fearing being attacked and called this and that and, you know, somehow feeling unsafe. That is our job, in my book. That is our job. And those are things that we can do and have. So, I'm sorry to be so long-winded. Next steps? Let's have a forum. Let's talk about it. Let's get together, people. Let's go. Let's get to work. Because, see, as I've told my city council already, you know? I don't know. I'm a student of not only Martin Luther King Jr., but of Coach Vince Lombardi, and his predicate is this, you gotta put in the work. And if you do that as a team, you cannot be beat.
That part's true.
That's it.
So...
And I'm willing, ready, and able to do that.
So I don't, I don't see any action tonight. Nobody wanted to make a motion, so I think we're about done tonight. Is there anything else that I need to do here? Nope. And I, yes.
So when is the resolution, proposed resolution, gonna come on the agenda? Next meeting?
It's gonna probably take, no, it's gonna take, no, it's gonna take a little time.
It'll be in March.
Thank you.
Yeah. And please give any feedback, if you have time at home, to read over that and give it to staff, so we're not violating this Brown Act. I really appreciate you guys. I appreciate you taking all of the emails, the calls, for loving the people in our city, and I know every one of us does, and you're brave. And thank you all, and I'm gonna go ahead and close this meeting. Thank you. Thank you.